Hello, at the present time, I'm going to adjourn this meeting to the six o'clock meeting due to section 54955. At this moment, we do not have council members present. Oh, I'm sorry, 54955 of the government code. We are adjourning this meeting to our regular six o'clock meeting.
Time right now is?
Time right now is five o'clock.
Okay. That was awful.
You did it perfectly.
It is now six o'clock, June 5th, 2018, and I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District and the City as Housing Assets Successor. May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Gomez?
Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Negrete?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. May we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We actually did not hold a closed session this evening. We adjourned the five o'clock meeting until this time at six o'clock because we had no closed session. There is nothing reportable with respect to any of the closed session items.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Father Jude "Juroge" from St. John of R. Catholic Church. I'm sure I didn't pronounce that correctly, but in the pledge of allegiance to be led by Police Chief Rick Bassinger. Please stand.
In God we trust, therefore let us pray. God of justice and mercy, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the gift of life, for the measure of good health, and our opportunity to serve the people of our city of Victorville. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter are weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, loving God, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. May God bless us all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, I do have a proclamation, and I also have a presentation of awards to the 2018 Public Works Day E-Say winners. So I will come down and do the presentation. I'd like to invite Brad Robinson, Andy Villa Gomez, and Michael Natividad to come forward and join me, please. Thank you so much for joining me. These men represent the eighty-six employees from our Public Works Division who work each and every day to maintain the city's infrastructure and improve our quality of life. They hold a variety of jobs, including graffiti removal, traffic, engineering, sewer maintenance, fleet maintenance, and much more. You are key to Victorville's success. I'm pleased to join my fellow council members in honoring the entire Victorville Public Works Division with this proclamation. This proclamation, which I will not read in full, but nevertheless, as I explained, we are so proud of everything that you do, and you just make our city something to be so proud of. And for people that come through or that live here, you know, can enjoy, you know. And for one, I consider myself Victorville. And so they should call me Victorville instead of Gloria. That's how much I love my city and all the people in our city. I'm all for the people, our residents, and not just in Victorville, but all the municipalities all around us. As you can see, I love each and every one of them, and they show their love in return. So on behalf of the Victorville City Council, I present this proclamation to our Public Works.
Glad to be here, and I am also Victorville.
I would just like to thank everybody in the community for allowing us to do what we do and talking to the children and having these three winners come up today. Thank you.
Very much.
Mayor, can I just get you guys to? One more.
Now, each year, our Public Works Division hosts about three hundred and fifteen fourth graders from our Public Works Day. This event is designed to introduce these students from the Victor Elementary School District to various city careers. This year, Public Works Day was held on May seventeen. These students were asked to write an essay about what they learned. To help me recognize these winners of this contest, I'd like to invite Juan Robinson from our Public Works Division and Jeanette Ellis from the School District to come forward and join me. We will start with our third place winner, and that is Leonidas Timua. I hope I pronounced that correctly, from Liberty Elementary.
Congratulations.
Second place, Trinity Decker from Liberty Elementary. And first place winner of Public Works E-Say contest is Ashley Kate Crystal from Green Tree East. I finally get someone that's shorter than me. Okay, now moving right along. I will ask our city clerk to present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda, please.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chamber's lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the public hearings, written communications, or public comment sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with removal should any persons or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. There are no revisions.
Thank you. Several leaders of the City of Hesperia are in attendance at our meeting this evening. As you may know, the Hesperia City Council meeting is scheduled for this evening. As a courtesy, I am moving public comment early in the agenda to enable our neighbors from Hesperia an opportunity to address the council before heading back to their own meeting. We will have a second time for public comment near the end of our meeting as usual to ensure anyone who arrives later still has an opportunity to address the council. So at this time, I will call on our Hesperia council members, whoever is first to come up.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia and City Council. First off, I'd like to thank you for the courtesy that you've afforded us and the opportunity to speak somewhat out of turn. So I thank you very much. I've come here this evening with my fellow council members here from the City of Hesperia to address the issue of Councilwoman Blanca Gomez secretly tape recording the funeral services of our late mayor, Mayor Russ Blewett. Since being informed of this disrespectful and repugnant act, I've gone through many emotions. Dismay, anger, indignation, and many more. What would possess anyone to do something so class-callous and ugly? Why would anyone think this was okay? I've had several conversations about this. When such conversation posed the question, could this be a case of simple ignorance? Could it be that Ms. Gomez was simply ignorant to the customs and practices of the Mormon faith, which our mayor was a very well-respected member of? Could this provide an opportunity for us all to learn possibly a valuable lesson in respect of another's culture? And within minutes, I got my answer. Unfortunately, this is at least the second time that Ms. Gomez has done this. When questioned about this apparently in the first occurrence, she justified her actions by saying that the family of the deceased authorized this. That was found to be untrue, and that family was as well outraged. What I'm left with is this. Ms. Gomez, you know what you did was wrong. You hid your phone so as not to be detected. You asked no one for permission and received no authorization and secretly recorded our mayor's funeral service even to include his lying in repose. And you did this not to honor him, but for something else far different. You did this to push a personal and political agenda, period. How dare you? What you did was repugnant, amoral, disrespectful. What you did does not deserve the benefit of the doubt in any way. What you did, simply put, was horrible. I call on the good residents of our neighbors to the north, the City of Victorville, to share in our indignation and to show this outrage by forming a recall drive to remove this embarrassment from the City of Victorville's dais permanently. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm sad for the reason that I stand before you today, that we've lost trust in our community, that a very important family had to be protected. And I feel that there's no way I can understand why you felt the need to do this. I don't think you consider the damage that you would do to the family. You were there during the service. You saw the faces of those grandchildren and children of Russ, and yet you did this. I can only conclude that perhaps you've never lost anyone and don't understand the depths of grief and sorrow that will overcome you during a service, and to have it put up for public consumption is not appropriate in any in any group to which I have ever spoken or been a part of. Perhaps you don't know. I don't understand how you could not know, but I am sorrowful for the loss of our mayor. The family members that are here tonight, the Steibers and the Nelsens, are close to many people in our community. They're very well-respected. Russ Blewett was loved and honored, and always. And I believe he had, in the past, told you of his feelings about you directly. So having your presence there, for those of us who knew his opinion, seemed like an extra insult. I would hope that when you look into your heart, you can sift your soul and be able to make amends to this family. I'm not sure how you could. Perhaps they would be the best to be consulted, but not by you, perhaps by a third party. But the faces before you that are from this family deserve more than they got from you. They deserve privacy in the moment of their sorrow and grief. And I hope in the future that it will change how you comport yourself to a way that can show respect for people and their accomplishments regardless of your personal feelings.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Paul Russ, and I'm a city council member over in Hesperia. First off, I do want to address everything tonight. I want to say thank you, Mayor Garcia and the rest of the council for their support for me when I was going through my illness. I got a lot of support from you guys, and I got a lot of support from your community here in Victorville. A lot of Facebook, a lot of personal messages from everybody in the city, so thank you for that. This is a great city and stuff. Unfortunately, I don't know if there's much more I can add to what's been said right now. I just, to me, I just can't imagine an adult that couldn't understand what they were doing in this situation was repugnant. I just, I can't, you know, I guess if you were a child, I would understand it. But an adult, I can't understand that. That that was so disgusting of an act and so disrespectful to this family that is in grief, and then they had to go through it again, and then, and videotaping children. You know, I just can't imagine how anybody could possibly think that that was appropriate. I'm sorry that you guys have to go through this. I'm sorry for the citizens of Victorville. If there is any redeeming factor, is there was an article today in the paper, and your citizens stepped up to the plate, and your citizens said how repugnant it was. Okay, so you know what, I think that everybody knows that this was not proper. It was not the right thing to do. And I don't know much more I could say, but again, thank you, Mayor Garcia, and thank you guys for all your support this past year for me. Thank you.
I just want to start off by thanking the City of Victorville for your reaching out. Appreciate Keith being at the funeral. Obviously, you honored our mayor by being there and by wishing your condolences, and we do appreciate that. I think that in this case, what isn't known is the depth of the history that Russ has to our community. And while it's been captured that he moved here in 2004 and then he eventually ran, his family has been here for much longer than that, and I count it a privilege to be part of the family. Have known them for thirty years, had them in my classroom as a teacher, have been able to coach them in basketball, have had them as TAs in my classrooms as well. And so Lori has been a big supporter of mine. She told me when I got my first administrative position in Hesperia Unified School District. And of course, I maintain a good friendship with Randy as well. So the Blewett-Stieber-Nielson family is very close to the Byrd family. That's on the personal side. On the city side, obviously with all that Russ has done for our city and been a part of that, we value him very greatly. And so I'd want you to understand, Councilmember Gomez, why this is such an offense to the community. But I'd also like to offer a olive branch, and really forgiveness starts with a contrite spirit and a contrite heart. Right now, there is still the post that's on the Facebook, and I think that the first step would be to take that down. The second step would be to offer your condolences to the family and acknowledge the fact that you have offended them and that you have offended the City of Hesperia. That, I believe, would go a long way to at least beginning this process. Because as we all know, I mean, today is an election day, and we know that across our country, there is a great deal of animosity, there are a great deal of negative discourse this- that's going on, and this is an example of that. And if we are to come together as a community, as Victorville, Asperia, Apple Valley, Adelanto, all the way across the High Desert, we're going to need to make sure that these type of situations are dealt with and move forward from this, and that we do legitimately come together and work together for the betterment of High Desert. And so I'm just calling on you to realize the error of your ways, and maybe it was not intended, and I'm hoping that it was not. I don't prejudge that. I certainly know that you've reflected on your Facebook page that you went and visited him. I know that Anthony did as well, and I'd like to think that that was all for the right purposes. But once again, I'm just calling on you to take those steps to move toward helping us then to be able to have a forgiveness in this situation and to move forward as a city and move forward as a High Desert. Thank you.
The families asked for a few minutes, and I'd like Lori Nielsen to come up and Jill Stiber to come up to perhaps make it clear how they felt as family members.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. My name is Lori Nielsen. I am the daughter of Russ Blewett. I am the mother of four grown children and 18 absolutely wonderful, bright, beautiful This has been a hard, a hard two weeks in our family, losing my father and the children losing their grandfather and then his great-grandchildren. We were just starting to get things going and accepting the fact that he is gone, getting things in order, and then this happened. I got the phone call yesterday. I want you to know, Ms. Gomez, how hurt, how angry, how disappointed, all the emotions that I have. You did not ask permission to take any pictures or any video from any of my children or myself or my husband. I'd like to thank the Daily Press. They did ask, they were told not to video, and they were told that they can take some pictures. In our religion, an open casket, you, we have our, we... We attend our church services every Sunday in our chapel, and then we have a temple, which is very sacred, and sacred things go on in that. And my father was very active in the church, a temple recommend holder, and was dressed in the proper clothing that we take very sacred. You have now put that out there and taken that sacredness away, which we do not appreciate. I want you to know that I love my father dearly, and he was a great man. I want you to know that I served on the Asperia School Board for 12 years. I learned from my dad. I learned all about politics. I never thought of myself as a politician. I thought of myself as a mom who got angry with a decision the school board made in 1991, and I ran, and I was successful for 12 years. I want you to know that I have followed some of the things that you have done. Very disappointed it is, I'm sure the city of Asperia is. I also want you to know that I am going to do everything in my power for whoever you may endorse to take my father's place in the Asperia City Council and get them unelected. Do everything I can so there will be a good person sitting in that seat that truly loves the city. And then in two years, I will be doing whatever I can to get you not reelected, because I don't think that you are good for the city of Asperia or city of Apple Valley or the city of Victorville. I don't think that you are good to represent any city at any meetings, and I am very disappointed in you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Gillian Stiber. I am Russ's youngest granddaughter. Mrs. Gomez, I do not know how you could do something so hurtful. You videotaped my children when they were extremely emotional. They had just lost their grandfather, great-grandfather. I had to pull my children out of school to say goodbye to their grandfather. They were not ready to say goodbye. I was not ready to say goodbye to my grandfather. It was a very hard few weeks, but we got the closure that we needed, and then you just ripped that closure up and threw it in the trash. To see my grandfather's picture of him in his casket is horrible. Not one family member or friend took a picture of him in his casket because it's inexcusable and it's unwarranted. You need to take those videos off of Facebook. I saw a half hour, 45 minutes, maybe an hour ago, you said, "Oh, I didn't know it was going to be bad that I was doing it so others could see." That's a lie. During the video, you were campaigning. You were talking to people, "Oh, you're for reelection. I'm part of the Victorville City Council." Not acceptable. I would never come to your funeral or your father or your mother or your children or any of your family members and ever campaign or ever pull any kind of political agenda. And for you to do that on top of videoing him is inexcusable. And if you would be the, do the right thing, you would take those videos down and you would step down from your seat because you are not a good person for this city and this community.
For record-keeping, will you introduce? We didn't get the names for the record, and maybe some of the audience don't know the other three council people that just followed you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Those that spoke this evening is myself, Mayor Protem, Bill Holland for the city of Asperia, Councilmember Rebecca Swanson, Councilmember Larry Byrd, and Councilmember Paul Russ. And I'm sorry, I had those in the wrong order. Councilmember Russ spoke before Councilmember Byrd. Also, I would like to thank the town of Apple Valley, the city of Adelanto, the Asperia Unified School District representatives, and the Asperia Recreation and Park Board for their unwavering support for the city of Asperia and really the city of Victorville. I believe it shows a solidarity in this community. Maybe some good can come from something so bad. Maybe it's the catalyst that can bring all of us together to not just be separate cities, but to be one community, and I thank you for your indulgence.
I'd like to begin by conveying my heartfelt condolences to the Blewett family.
If you don't mind, I will read this for the mayor. I'd like to begin by conveying my heartfelt condolences to the Blewett family, the Asperia City Council, and the citizens of Asperia. Russ was a tireless advocate for Asperia and the entire High Desert community, and his legacy of service will not be forgotten. Thank you to the Blewett family and Asperia council members for taking the time to attend our council meeting to share your concerns. I know this has to be very difficult for all of you. I want to assure you that when Ms. Gomez attended Mayor Blewett's funeral services, she did so as an individual. She was not representing Victorville in any official capacity, and she was not authorized to represent the council by any members of the council. Speaking on behalf of my fellow council members, we do not condone Mrs. Gomez's action.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Jim.
Madam Mayor, just like to add a few words to that. It's difficult in a situation like this to know exactly what to say. If I thought my personal apology would accomplish something, would have some meaning to Russ's family, I would offer it now. But how can I apologize for something I would never dream of doing? How can I accept any responsibility for behavior that offends me down to the core of my being? I want to say that Ms. Gomez has no moral compass, but honestly, I think the truth is she has no compass of any kind, simply doesn't know boundaries, and somewhere along the way in her life, she missed the lesson about personal boundaries. And we've been dealing with this for a year, and my condolences to your family.
Madam Mayor, a couple of comments. I'd like to thank all the members of the community that came out here to speak tonight, and it's unfortunate that you've got exposed to what we've been exposed to. Not once, not sometimes, every single time that I have to sit with this person. Something like this happens, and it's just getting worse. And I would like to extend my condolences to the Blewett family. And I, whenever we lose someone like that, it is deep and profound, not just in their particular community, but if you know anything about service, people like that are not just growing on trees. People are very busy. I understand that. But sometimes people come along and they really, they make a difference, and they make you glad to be part of this desert. The desert was, has been evolving, and it's growing fast, and I tell you what, I wish more people would think about service in their community coaching and everything like that, because you have great people all around you like Russ Blewett, who are a great example. And I would, I'm just, I'm very disappointed, as usual, about what happened, but I appreciate the family members coming to speak tonight and the other community leaders. And this gives me pause as a elected representative of the city of Victorville. I don't know what else. This is disgusting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to be very brief. I received several phone calls and thought it was a bad joke until I got the newspaper, and I can tell you, I was simply shocked. I wish that I could take all the words of condolences and heartfelt feelings and put it into an elegant speech so that you would understand how deeply this council feels about this. But I think you understand that. I think you know that, and I hope, beginning now and in the future, that this council in the city will show you, all of you, and prove to you, all of you, that what occurred is not Victorville. It's not this council, and hopefully we'll never see this again. But my apologies, my sincere apologies. I'm so sorry this happened. And thank you for coming here and voicing your opinions. This way, the public is going to understand how you feel and hopefully how we feel. And thank you for showing up and using this forum that we're so happy to make available so that you can have your say. But again, I wish we didn't have to do this. I wish I could somehow put this into words, but I just simply can't express my emotions right now. I'm so still in shock about this, so thank you.
So I'm going to take three minutes in honor of our mayor that passed away in silence to honor his respect. In honor of our mayor, Russ Blewett, he will never be forgotten.
I will continue now. I do have quite a few cards. If there's a group that's speaking on the same subject, if they want to have a representative speak for them, that would be helpful. I will give them two minutes. I do have quite a few cards, and we still have our agenda to continue with. So the first one that I will be calling up will be Thurs, Smitty. I'll call you by the right name, Smitty.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and council members. Boy, that was pretty tough three minutes to sit through, Blanca. You got no class, girl, I got to say. God give me the strength to be nice tonight, please. Councilmember Blanca Gomez, you seem to always want to get attention, girl. You sure did it this time for all the wrong reasons. How in the world do you think it's okay to film a Mayor Russ Blewett in his personal time in his casket and then film his family and his children and his grandchildren, his great-grandchildren? How do you think that is morally right? I cannot contain myself. It seems like you had the idea to hide your camera because you knew it wasn't right, because you knew somebody would have said something to you. But you put it on the internet anyway, for whatever political reason, that you can sit there and look at this crowd that you think you represent in this city of Victorville is beyond me. You need to resign with any dignity that you have. You need to resign with any dignity that you have left and leave the city of Victorville. You are not an elected official representing anyone but yourself. You have a camera there. You've got your friends filming everywhere in everything you do. What a conspiracy that you have. You are an embarrassment to yourself, or at least you should be. You're an embarrassment to the city of Victorville and to the whole Victor Valley. An embarrassment for your actions, of your continued actions since you've got elected. How can you represent the citizens of Victorville? I don't see anyone here, or anyone maybe later, that says, boy, I voted for Blanca Gomez and she represents me. I haven't seen that in a year and a half around here. Some of the things that we've read on the internet, how disgusting, how disrespectful, how insensitive. No class, no coothe. How cruel can one human being be to another? It's not about race, skin color, religion. It's about respect for Russ Bluit and his family.
That's been two minutes.
I'll leave you with this. If you do not resign, I'm a resident of Apple Valley. I've been involved in Victorville and Hesperia for a lot of years. I will put up the first thousand dollars to somebody that will start the recall to remove you from office.
The next person is Paul Russ. Did he leave? Richard Hall and after Richard, Stephanie Clayton.
Mayor, thank you for this opportunity. And Blanca, I've known you for a while. Russ was a member of my church and I sat with him in the pews at church. I also know that he went to many other churches and he is a very good man. I only have a couple of things that I want because I want to, do not want to take away from the words that have already been said. And please excuse me, I, my eyes are, as I'm getting older, it's harder to see. My concern here is that this is a lack of judgment and hopefully, that is all that is. As this, as City Councilman Larry Bird has indicated to you, you need to go ahead and take that off the website and reach out to the family. If you have a religious heart in your soul, then that's probably the best thing that can be done. Sometimes we make decisions that are not always the best thing we need to do. We're thinking of a certain different kind of gold, but that gold turns out to be fool's gold. And it hurts a lot of different people. I've known Paul Russ ever since I've lived here and every, I moved in here before he did. I'm a member of the High Desert most of my life. I come from a little small town by the name of Trona.
You have thirty seconds?
It is, anyway, please, think about that, do that. You have angered a lot of people that should not have been angered and disrespected the family of Russ Bluit. And that is my comment.
After Stephanie, I have Ryan Heel.
My name is Steven, not Stephanie, but I'd like to defer to the end, if possible, to allow the other people that have comments on this topic to, to proceed first. Thank you.
Art Bishop. Mayor Art Bishop.
I'm actually just here as Art Bishop's citizen tonight, but thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council people. Actually, I want to be honest with you. I'm a, I'm a little embarrassed to be here tonight. Though I was also a little embarrassed when constituents called me and they said they saw me on, being on FaceTime. And I'm, I'm not a big social media type individual. I think people who use social media constantly are little people trying to make themselves look big. But I think as elected officials, it's our responsibility to have common sense in the quorum and try to make sure that we're respectful and use our moral compass. And Russ Bluit was a friend. I was invited as well as it was a public event. It was a First Amendment program. Someone wanted to come and I guess video and I guess they legally have their right. But to me, I think as elected officials, we need to use that moral compass. We need to use respect and we need to use common sense. And I'm not sure that was done. Again, I am speaking here tonight as myself, as an individual who was there, who the back of my shiny little bald head was videoed. But I just, I think it's incumbent upon elected officials to make sure that we're trying to do the right thing. On that, I just want to thank the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem, working so diligently with all the other mayors in the High Desert and the mountains. On trying to make sure that we, all the city councils in the High Desert, work together, not trying to work apart. So thank you very much and have a good evening. I want to go back and watch the elections.
Thank you. Ryan Heel and after Ryan, April Pinkston.
If you're currently taking comment on the continued, if you're currently taking comment on the continued issue with the mayor passing, I'm happily defer my time until the end of the meeting.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Amy Stanton. Brooke Rowell. Wesley Kintner. I could pronounce yours. Craig Garcia. I pronounced that one well, too. Robert Harriman.
Good evening, council. I'm going to get straight to the point. I've been calling for this lady to resign for ten months. And I'm just sick of it, sick of her. Okay, Blanca, you're a disgrace to our city. I mean, an absolute disgrace. You have embarrassed us repeatedly. Did you post the video for your own notoriety that you can't seem to grab? Because of your sanctuary agenda that you've been trying to pull off here since the day you denied that you knew in rialto that it was a sanctuary get-together with your city of Victorville badge on? Or your false narrative that you're good for our community? You're not good for this community. You have done nothing but separate it. There's been nothing but separation in this city council since you've taken that seat. You don't deserve to be on the dais. You continue to step out of bounds. I, as a matter of fact, I, I personally believe you think there are no bounds. At least you've been acting that way. And I'm tired. I am sick and tired of reading about you in the newspaper, showing up uninvited at events and thinking you deserve and you're representing the city of Victorville. You are not. You are not. And I will also say, if my good friend, Smitty, is going to put up a thousand dollars, I may not be able to do as well, but I will contribute to that. You must go. Resign now.
John Quidos and after John is Jeff Heinz. Lisa Hoag. Melody, I can't pronounce the last name. Angela Avery. Jennifer Montier. Kami Champlin. Catherine Chamberlain. Destiny Wright. Larry Baxton or Baxter. Chris Thompson. Bob Waler. Gilbert Vasquez. There's two cards for Gilbert. Are you the same person? Okay. Lisa Smith. Monica Davis. Elaine Nelson. Devon Finson. Liz Sukaro and Joe Sukaro. And those are all the cards that I have so far for this. Alexandra Diaz.
Good evening, city council and family of Mayor Russ. First of all, I am very sorry for your loss. And I want to make a comment. And I truly believe that Blanca Gomez did that with no intentions to hurt the family or to offend anybody. My sister passed away four years ago. She died from cancer. She left behind four daughters. My sister was, you know, a beautiful, strong woman. And she passed away. Very skinny, very, she did not look, not even compare, no reason how. She used to be. And we decided that our funeral was going to be private. Our funeral was not public. And we did open the casket. And to people and friends that showed up, we posted a sign on the church. And we asked everybody, no pictures, no videos are allowed to take.
You have thirty seconds?
And so, you guys are feeling offended and I understand the pain. But also, you called the press to post this, but the press is not all honest. Two posts in a row, two articles that they have write, they're not honest and truthfully of what happened. I've been included on those posts.
Your time is up.
And I've been in the presence of how Gloria Garcia mistreats people, my own self and their own stuff.
I'm sorry.
And how Mr. Negrete is offensive by laughing is very disrespectful, too.
Thank you.
Art Rico. David Placencia. Roger Lapland. Lapland.
Madam Mayor, City Council, I just want to give respect to Mayor Russ Bluit. And on behalf of the California Democratic Party, I want to, I want to totally apologize for Ms. Blanca's absolutely unprofessional attitude and behavior.
Casey Andrews. What is your name?
Casey Andrewsky.
Andrewsky.
And I am Russ's oldest granddaughter. And I didn't want to speak, but as I'm sitting here with my mom and my dad and my thirteen-year-old niece, she says to me, Aunt Casey, she can't even look anybody in the eye. You learn that in preschool. To me, it is very sad that you would do something and not even take the chance to apologize to us as we are sitting here in front of you. It's disrespectful, not only to our family, but to our religion and to our community, as well as your own community. It makes me very sad that I have to come into the city of Victorville to shop. I will do everything in my power to put no money into this community until Ms. Gomez is off the council. I am a licensed marriage and family therapist and your behavior baffles me. There is no psychological diagnosis that could even describe someone that has no moral compass and would hurt a family so badly and not even take the time to say, I'm sorry. Maybe you're schizophrenic, maybe you're bipolar, I don't know. But I feel that you need some professional help. And hopefully, your local, your leaders in this community will assist you in getting the help that you need. Because you have damaged our family and our grandfather. And you have hurt me personally. Four of those children that you put on video are mine and I don't appreciate that. I don't appreciate you putting videos of my children crying, of my children's heartache. And my heartache and my mom's and my siblings. Because this was very unexpected. We never expected our grandpa to die. When I got the phone call from my mom, I was in utter shock. My daughter had to drive me because I was so hurt and scared that my grandfather was going to die. And he did. And you use that as a political agenda. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Go get her.
Post that on Facebook.
Those are all the cards that I have.
Tough, tough situation to follow, so my condolences as well to everyone. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Steve Clayton. I am a husband, father, four daughters, horse owner, educator, and a non-participant in the cannabis industry. I've also produced more different cannabis events than anyone in the state of California. I'm the co-executive producer for Chalice. We are here because we feel our due process of being heard in front of the city council has been violated. We are here to ask that you one final time reconsider Chalice, California. Why is it city council not even willing to consider the advantages of the event? How can the city have the ability to disregard the businesses and citizens of the community? The non-consideration of Chalice does not only affect the Chalice team. It affects your citizens and businesses, the very people that voted to make this legal in your community. With all of the other social problems that face the city, why not consider the revenue lost and additional new taxable revenue generated from our event? How can you turn away a thirty million dollar economic How can you turn away a $30 million economic impact to your community? Do you know the McDonald's sold out of food and had to lock their doors? Do you know that the Arco AM PM sold everything on their shelves? And case studies are plethora. If the issue is not revenue, it must be written regards to public safety. As a father of four young daughters, I can tell you that I bring my daughters comfortably to the safe event. In 2016, when I sat with the San Bernardino County Sheriff prior to Chalice's first year in the high desert, we worked on safety protocol and emergency action plans. I can tell you the lieutenant came up to me after the event and told me, "I would much rather have your event than any rave any day of the week." With no incidents, no deaths, no arrests in the past few years, we have a track record of safety. Why disregard us? We strongly urge that you not let this go unnoticed. We strongly request that you add this to your next board agenda and sign the BCC acknowledgement letter. Thank you for your time.
The rest of the cards will be called up. We will have a second public comment time at the end of our agenda. So I still have some cards, but we will continue with our agenda at this time. We will start with public hearing, item B1. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against the annexation of the Canterbury Track to the Victorville City Y2 Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number Six. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the City Council conduct the public hearing on the assessment ballot proceeding for the annexation of the Canterbury Track to the Victorville City Y2 Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number Six. Instruct the city clerk to count the ballots, determine if a majority protest exists, and if no majority protest exists, adopt resolution number 18-018.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of staff at this time?
Yes. So for item B1, which is a public hearing item for the Canterbury Track annexation, we're going to have two proceeding, B2 and B3 as well, with solid waste fees, as well as with the water, not non-potable water, so it's wastewater. So there was a lot of confusion as to what was happening out in the back when we had a closure at 5:00 and restored the meeting to the 6:00 o'clock. I spoke to at least five residents that were really concerned with what was happening back there. It was my personal understanding that we were going to be doing an open count in front of everyone so that it could be visual. However, I got a different understanding after speaking with the attorney, and that same clarification, I believe, is rendered to the public. There is a Prop 218 versus an LMAT, and I would appreciate if staff or the city attorney would please apprise the general public of what the discussion was and clarify any demystification that could have been occurring there.
Mayor would be glad to do that if that's okay with you, Mayor Garcia.
Well, we're going to stick to our agenda.
That's a question. I can answer the question, okay.
Yes.
You okay with me answering that?
Yes, go ahead.
It's basically governed by Prop 218, which is a change to the California Constitution. Prop 218 specifically addresses and treats assessments different than fees and charges, and requires that with respect to assessments, namely an assessment district, that actually the ballots must be counted at the time of the public hearing. So the public hearing is opened, you then count the ballots, and you indicate whether or not there's a protest. There is no similar requirement in Prop 218, which is in the Constitution, with respect to fees and charges. That's why with respect to fees and charges, you can count them at any time. In fact, if wanted, the city clerk could count them when she receives them. As an act of transparency, however, we advise the city clerk to count them out in the public foyer right before this meeting, which is what occurred.
So I have another question. So what was being counted back there was for the Canterbury Track, it wasn't for the other two items? Because I was under the impression that they were B2 and B3 items.
Incorrect. You got them reversed. What was counted out there was for items B2 and B3. The Canterbury Track ones will be counted now, once the public hearing is open.
Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong, did I hear the city clerk say that there was absolutely no denials or oppositions to the Canterbury Track?
I don't know what you heard.
You didn't state that?
No.
Okay, so they haven't been counted and they're going to be counted?
They're not opened.
Okay, so what's the process that we are to expect when this counting begins? I don't think I've witnessed something like that, and if I have, it's probably, this is where the confusion comes in. What's the process that's going to be taking place? Will it be now?
I would assume that the mayor will open the public hearing after the, after council member questions have been answered. And once that is open, then the city clerk can start counting the ballots. And at the close of the public hearing, she will then indicate what the count is.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
One else? At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards from anyone, so I close the public hearing.
I would wait to close it until we get the count now.
Oh, okay.
Actually, yeah, you can close it now, and then we can give the count as soon as we do it in connection with the adoption of the resolution.
Yes, I close the public hearing, so she can do the count.
Anybody can watch it. People here watching it. It's recorded, it's recorded. We're on video right now, and she's going to... Trusting me? I'll watch it. You watch her.
Madam Clerk, do you have a count?
Yes.
Okay, we will continue then. Ms. Gomez, will you please take a...
I'm witnessing what's happening, just like I spoke with the attorney right now.
The count has been completed now.
Okay.
We received a total of eight ballots, no protest.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
It was closed.
Closed.
Closed, and there is no majority protest at this point, so it would be appropriate to consider the adoption of the resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. Any further questions?
Yes, so what was taking place was if any of you wanted to actually visually come up and see, like, I was seeing what the process was, I've never seen it, so I was really curious. We were just witnessing what was happening, there was an opening of letter, counting, and I didn't know there was only eight ballots. But I was interacting with whoever I could to give me an explanation, and I just wanted you guys to know during the process, you could have witnessed it. I guess I had to wait for you guys to ask, and I did, but nobody asked, so I felt compelled to at least let you know what I saw.
There's no more comments with the council, call for the vote.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to item B2. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against establishing a schedule of periodic fees for the collection and disposal of solid waste, recyclable materials, and household hazardous waste. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council conduct the public hearing, determine whether a majority protest exists at the close of the public hearing, and if no majority protest exists, find resolution number 18-012 exempt from environmental review under sections 15061B3 and 15273 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and adopt resolution number 18-012 to establish the new solid waste rates.
Thank you. Council members, any questions of staff?
Yes. So when and where were these ballots counted, and I'm assuming they were harnessed with Prop 218? And would you remind the public how this protest took place, to coming about now, including of any special readings, any items that might be or will be added to the consent calendar, or if there will be another public hearing after this one?
There have already been several public hearings on this, there have been workshops on this. The city transmitted ballots to, I believe, somewhere in the neighborhood of 32,000 residents. Is that correct? And with respect to that, when those ballots come in at any time between then and the public hearing, the city clerk can count those ballots. She decided to count those ballots right before the beginning of this meeting, since there was a number of approximately, what was it, 60, I believe?
Yeah.
In that neighborhood. So it was manageable to do it at the, prior to the commencement of this meeting. So she has counted it, and it would be appropriate, once the public hearing is closed, to give the outcome of that count.
So there was a total of 60 ballots in what way that were counted?
We haven't gotten the results yet.
Okay, so 60 ballots that were given to us, but we don't know whether that's a yes or a no, is that what you're saying?
I don't know the answer to that. The city clerk probably knows the answer to that, but after the public hearing and people have made their comments, the mayor will probably ask what the results of that count are.
Okay, so then, how many households received this letter? And what's the percentage that we have currently, if the clerk can address that?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, there was approximately, in this case, 32,000 notices sent out to owners of property within the city of Victorville that get trash service. In this item, maybe for the benefit of the audience and everybody here, this is a much more involved process than what we went through in the previous item. Previous item, property owners had protested to us effectively to allow for them to be assessed, to have landscape services provided to them. In this particular case, we started this process, at least the study process, approximately six months ago. But the deliberative process, this is before you started, February 27th of this year. And it started with a cost of service study. A cost of service study is an analysis, a very involved analysis, that identifies what is the requisite, what are the costs to provide a service, in this particular case, of solid waste? And that's everything that involves the blue can, the green can that we're used to, if you're a commercial business, it's the large dumpsters, it's providing costs associated with sending material to the landfill, and also to the material recycling facility, also known as the MRF. That study identifies essentially the cost required to be recovered by the ratepayers, and then establishes a schedule of rates to be paid among a variety of different customers or rate classes, as we call it. This particular item has gone through a couple of processes with the council, where the council has had opportunity to comment. Council has also had the opportunity to authorize the proceeding with what brings us to here, which is a protest vote. Protest vote works in such a way, where those 32,000 mailers are sent out, and this is similar in the case of sewer, which is the next item, to where a protest has to be returned to the city of Victorville, clearly stating protest, and also must be verified as an owner. So with that, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the receipt of the protest notice returned from the property owner is, in fact, a vote in protest, in that the actual mailer that went out does not require, and the process does not require, an actual affirmation to be returned by the property owner. So with that, everything received should all be considered protest votes.
So I have a couple of more questions. How was this process, well, before I go to that one, is the result of the ballots, if it's over 50% plus one, an end-all? Or will the people of Victorville have the opportunity to protest again? And how does the city council votes affect in-vote when there's a majority for, or if the actual council would decide to go against and vote against it? How does that affect today's decision?
So if I might, effectively, what we've conducted and are completing is a very deliberative process, where you're actually going out to the voters, and you're asking for their approval or denial of this particular item. So certainly with a protest, which would be 50 plus one, I think that's sending you the message that there's a protest, and in fact, you would not be recommended to approve the resolutions. But absent a 50 plus one vote, staff's recommendation is that you go ahead and adopt the rate plan, which establishes a set of rates for the next five years. That's how we operate, is on a five-year cycle. And it gives you the requisite ability to impose that set of rate increases over the next five years. Every five years is our goal, to where we would be going through this kind of a process. Ideally, we don't want to allow the rate study to lapse, but there would also be, any changes to the rate plan or the rate structure that we have would require a similarly-natured process. So that'd be the opportunity for the public to vote again.
Madam Mayor, I have a question, please, of the city manager. Have these questions been posed to you in your lengthy, private meetings with Ms. Gomez before the council meetings?
In this particular case, I'd have to defer, I did miss yesterday's agenda briefing, I was out of town.
You guys spend a huge amount of time educating her on this stuff, and it seems like we come back to these meetings and re-educate her again, over and over and over. Am I wrong? Am I way out of line here?
I think the answer to the question is, yes, we do spend three hours with the council member, and I don't believe that these questions came up.
Been through all of this, right? Rest of us understand 218. She's had a year and a half to get educated. Can we move on with this item?
So my other question is, how was the process marketed in comparison to the special elections Measure K, where we spent approximately $100,000 for the special election, and $25,000 for marketing its flyer? How much did we spend here in comparison to that?
So we're prohibited to market or advocate and support or in opposition to items like this. I think what you're referring to in Measure K, again, the answer is similar, there's no ability for the city to market for or against. There's certainly costs associated with the election, which we could identify separately for you, but that is in no way an advocacy campaign.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Anyone else?
It'd be appropriate at this time to open the public hearing. It'd be appropriate to open the public hearing right now and take any cards?
Okay, so, we don't have to, I don't have to have, be a total of the...
You can, you can get the total right now, and then, either way, it doesn't really matter, as long as you do both.
Okay. I would like to ask the clerk how many protest votes we have received so far?
For the solid waste, we received, before tonight's meeting, 64, and then we've added an additional two, so we have a total of 66 right now.
Thank you. At this time, I do open the public hearing, and I do have some cards that I have received. The first one is Jerry Law, and the second person will be Carmen Reese.
All right, now, this is November 5th. I know this is our regular screening meal, regular, for have our meeting. I hope nobody doesn't get a chance to vote this time on June 5th, because we held a council meeting. And I realize this is probably the largest amount of people I've seen in this audience at one time. That's good. Now, my understanding, if I have this correct, so I've been up and down the state on my campaign, what is the, don't we, does the county of San Bernardino, don't we take our stuff to the San Bernardino County, our trash company? And of course, don't we have pickups where we can go by and drop off our extra stuff we want to right over here off of Palmdale Road? Is that true? So is this a situation... So, is this a situation on raising the price for this situation? Are we raising the price or asking for a raising price in our trash and morgue fee? Is that true, or am I misreading it? Somebody answer, I don't care who. Is that yes or no?
Did you read it?
Well, I thought I read it. I'm reading it right now. Well, let's put it this way. We're coming out of a bad time in this country. People are starting to build things. They're starting to get some money back. They're starting to care for their family like they should. So, my understanding, if I understand it correctly, if this is to raise a fee or a price, if I misunderstand reading it, you don't raise any fee, you raise no prices on anything right now, until this city, this county gets themselves turned around, this state, so that people can get a little further ahead. Being an old construction man, or being an old delivery man in construction material, I have seen more building and things going on in this state since the President of the United States got in. So, if I make myself clear, I don't want to see any fee raised on anything right now. Period. That's my personal opinion. Okay? Is that correct? Did I make sense? I did make sense. Well, that's the way it goes. You can catch me on Live Talk every Tuesday, Thursday night, and I'll be on the night Live Talk USA.
He's got to talk to us. You know. Madam Mayor.
I'm just saying very carefully, do not raise fees, do not raise my taxes on anything at this time.
We understand that. Thank you.
You're certainly welcome. And by the way, your gray hair, just like me. How old are you?
I'd rather not say.
You cannot say? Well, whatever you say, I probably can't move back that far.
I'm 78 years old. Thank you.
Now, I have Carmen Reese, and after Carmen will be Jesus Enrique Mayner. Or, it looks like Mayner.
Is there Mayner? Are we close? Mayner's, Mayner?
Carmen Reese.
They have left.
Jesus Enriquez? And after April, Brooke Brownell?
Good evening, Mayor. Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here, obviously, to speak on the concern of raising the bills around here. I didn't get any kind of notification. The only kind of notification I got was I heard on the radio today that you guys were having a meeting about considering raising prices again. And I didn't get any notification in the mail. And I've lived here for 10 years, and believe me, when I get something from the city of Victorville, I open it and read it. And I would just appreciate it if you would not raise the bill, because, you know, I'm retired military, and I'm on a fixed income. And whatever you do, I need another bill like I need a hole in my head. Thank you very much.
After Brooke will be Craig Garcia.
Hi, my name's Brooke. I'm in the same boat as everybody else. I don't want to see the trash bills get raised. I think five years ago, when you guys signed the contract, there was a lot of vacancy houses. All the vacancies are filling up. They're starting to build stuff. The trash companies are making more on their runs now, so they're generating more cash. And even, I have a rental property. If my tenant doesn't pay, I have to pay it. So, you guys are compensating, the trash company's not losing out, same as water. And, oh yeah, so yeah, please don't raise the bills, because it's just going to cost everybody more money. And if you guys could start painting the plywood on downtown 7th Street, just to make it look a little nicer, because 7th Street looks real trashy. It's all about trash.
Thank you. After Craig will be Jeffrey Meadows.
My name's Craig Garcia, and hopefully, give me a little bit of latitude as far as time. I did what you said, got my neighbors together. We put some questions together for you, and I gave her a copy of it. But I know I won't be able to cover all of those. But there was an item that I was going to be asking for, and I'll read off of this. As a citizen of Victorville, I'm asking that the 50% plus-one protest count on these items be removed. This is in regards to two and three. Any oversight, however minimal, from the owners is enough to disqualify the question validity, including the envelopes. You're asking for them to put their APN number on it, and make sure they sign the thing, make sure all the information on there. Any one of those, if they don't do it, it could disqualify their protest. And I don't honestly remember, the 17 years I've been here, I don't remember getting anything from the city that had this 50% plus. It might be something you guys just started, but I do not remember anything like that. You put a lot of pressure on the citizens. And I've gotten on the phone, I pass, went up and down my neighborhood. I hope some of the people here are from some of the ones I talked to on Facebook. You know, if we didn't say anything, you guys wouldn't know we're a little bit pissed off about it. You know, I am. Because, let me continue, I'm sorry. I am also citing a conversation that existed in the May 29 budget workshop. Budget organizers, city council members, and all staff in attendance cannot assume that the proposed items will be passed. The general public will maintain that a preapproval is in the works. In assuming passage, which came from a lot of you guys in the budget meeting, in assuming passage of any item, all parties are disregarding the scheduled hearing, the discussion, the questions and concerns from the general public. Not all, I think your budget committee was assuming that all these are going to be passed for your next year's budget. Both, don't do that, Jim. Don't shake your head, because I heard it. I heard it on your broadcast.
On my broadcast?
No, not your broadcast. When you guys were talking about the budget, but you were shaking your head, no. And I heard it on the broadcast. You guys were assuming, your budget person said loud and clear, we assume that these are going to be passed. You can't assume anything until you hear from these people. You can't assume anything about next year's budget until these people are heard. And then talk about it again. I don't know how many times I come to the council and ask you guys, I've even asked Eric personally, hey, get some people together, and we'll all talk about this. We'll have some coffee, and we'll talk about this. But you guys make these assumptions, and you get them even more mad. And then they come here, they talk for their three minutes, and nothing gets done. You, at one meeting, Jim said that you guys pay attention to a lot of things. Everything is set up here. But I'll be honest with you, I emailed all of you in regards to a $267,000 discrepancy in your, what's it called, your consent calendar, last year. $267,000 discrepancy in black and white, and I didn't get one answer from anybody. All I wanted was an explanation. I went according to your figures. So, listening to us is one thing, but doing something about it is another. I got a list of questions from all my neighbors, including Gloria Garcia and Eric Negretti sitting on a solid waste board. I went through these, they wrote them to me, and they put them on my porch, they put them on my door, and I added them to all of this, starting with, is the passing of this item instrumental in satisfying the proposed 18, 19 fiscal budget? I didn't ask that question, my neighbor did. I know the questions I asked. Has the city and the budget organizers already assumed that this item will be voted on and passed? What is the assumption based on? What's your assumption? Why did you, why did you guys assume in your budget meeting that these were going to be passed? And what was the reason for that? Unless you're trying to satisfy something that you don't know is going to be happening later on? I'm sorry, folks. And the city guaranteed that all affected property owners and businesses have received this notice. You got one of them sitting over there. They didn't get the notice. And you can't offer, you have no guarantees to offer. So, half of these mailers that were mentioned might not even gone out. They might maybe have been printed. Are we to conclude that by approving this notice, we are approving rate increases for the next five years? That's ridiculous. Come on, give me a break. Tell me about what's going to happen next year. I might die in a couple of years, and then my wife's going to get stuck with this bill that she doesn't know anything about. You can't project five years, because if you're going to project five years for this, you project five years for your budget, too. Will the city entertain an option to review trash rates from year to year? That's one of my neighbors. Recusal has been applied, this is in regards to Gloria's, Gloria and Eric's being on the solid waste board. Recusal has been applied for other items. Would recusal apply to solid waste board involvement? And I know what this guy's referring to, because he was at the meeting when Kennedy and Cox recused themselves from Green Tree. I told you guys about this last year, and I questioned it. I came in here saying, you shouldn't have been recused. I wanted you guys to sit through this. And this year, through the suggesting of your city manager, you guys got up and walked out of here. The recusal, I, in all my life, I heard recusal once before Trump got into office. But now I hear it all the time. Now, it's a part of the conversation. And you guys did it yourself. I don't want that in my city. I don't think we have to do that. We're all neighbors, we're all friends. If we create a budget every year, why are we projecting solid waste for the next five years? With respect to the subject, it seems that infrastructure has not been applied. How can the city, in all truthfulness, project a five-year application toward the unknown? You guys don't know what's going to happen. It's going to be a Holocaust here pretty soon, and they're going to wipe out the whole city. We don't know that. You're projecting five years of, of course, it's not important to certain people, but it's important to a lot of people. I know that because of the reaction I got. I'm sorry. With respect, has the city researched any options and services? This is important, because I had my sons running out, in and out of their houses, checking the sizes of their trash cans. Now, I noticed on your bill, you give us an option of a 95-gallon trash can and a 35-gallon trash can, but you don't give us anything in between. In other words, if I have a 35 and I can't fit it in there, I'm going to have to ask for a 95, which I have right now. But you don't give anything in between. There is a 65. I did my research. I called the place in LA. There is a 65. When my family moved here 17 years ago, it was me, my wife, and my three sons. The boys eat like crazy, and that trash can would usually get full, more than full, and no more. It's me and my wife. That trash can barely gets full, and then I throw my grass in there, maybe half. So, that's something I have to consider, but you didn't, you guys don't give me the option of a 65. I know it exists. So, that's one option some of the seniors might want to think about. If we are, here's a good one. Here's a good one. If we are charged by the gallon and the waste management folks bill you by the ton, who does the conversion? Who does that conversion? I know there's no meters on the trucks, because I talked to the guys that bring the truck, there's no meters on the trucks. There's nothing that that big arm, it says anything about the weight they're picking up. So, I know, there's, there's got, there's a, there's a disconnect there, somewhere, because they're billing you guys by the ton, and we're getting billed by the gallon. So, I'd like to know where that conversion is, or if some of those trucks have meters on them. I don't think they do. Recycling is an effort to reuse salvageable product. Why are we being charged so much for reusable items? We're being charged the same thing for the reusable items as we are if it were trash, if they're reusable. So, maybe a little bit less is something to think about. What, this is one my son brought up. What is meant by the ANSI rating on the receptacle? The ANSI is a safety rating, if I'm not mistaken, you guys can look this up. It's a safety rating put together so the weight that's inside the trash can doesn't exceed so much so it doesn't bust open. But if I exceed that weight, whose liability is that? If I'm, if I tell my wife to take the trash can out, and she twists her ankle because it's too heavy, whose fault is that? You have an ANSI rating on there of 322 pounds, when technically, 95 gallons weighs a lot more than that. Why are we expected, oh, here's, oh, gosh. Waste management is a separate business. Why are we expected to pay for damages to their trucks? It says on your notice that we're expected to pay, part of this increase is for damages done to their trucks on our roads. How does that figure? How does that figure? I already paid taxes on the roads, don't I? How does it figure that you're going to charge me some more for damages to their trucks Why are we expected to pay for maintenance at the waste management facility? That's on there, too. Why are we expected to pay for illegal dumping in the city? That's on there, too. If you had more police, if you had more code enforcement, if you had those people out there patrolling the street, like we should have, we should have more police and code enforcement to go out there and watch some of these people, or some kind of emergency number where I can tell you, hey, there's a guy over here throwing trash, and get the response we're supposed to get, it wouldn't happen. But we, now, you're going to bill us for illegal dumping. Since 2008, there have been no increases to rates. The infrastructure concerns are always in play. Are we to assume that because the city administration ignored the infrastructure demands over the past 10 years, we should be punished through rate increases? You guys got a copy of this. I hope you guys look at it, and there's one or two that I missed. But, like I said, I would want, I'm sure all these people would want the consideration before you make a vote, before you go through this 50% plus thing, which I've never gotten, before you go through that, listen to their concerns. Because, hey, we're all neighbors here. We're all friends, and we're all neighbors. And I'd like, if anything, take off that 50% plus, because you're probably going to hear the same thing from me in regards to the sewers, too. Thanks.
I think there are a couple of things that need to be clarified. Every single number in the budget is an assumption. Are you listening, sir? Sir? I'm not engaging in a debate, I just want you to hear this. Every single number in the budget is an assumption. Every one of them. Every single one of them. When things change, we have to flex and move with those changes. Absolutely reasonable to assume this, it's absolutely reasonable, this-
Why is the assumption that you passed? It wasn't the number that you assumed, it was the passage of this that you assumed. You guys seem to-
You had your 20 minutes. We have studied this for six months. He has never been at- He has never been at one of our meetings where we went through details upon details, costs on top of costs. Every cost that we've dealt with for the last 10 years has gone up. We haven't raised these rates in years. It's irresponsible to not charge what it costs to deliver the service. It's just irresponsible. I'm sorry, I don't want them to go up, but. We have a duty to this community, not to 20 or 30 people who don't want their rate to go up. I don't want mine to go up. The overwhelming majority obviously either thinks it's okay or they don't care. One of the other.
I'm sorry. Okay, the next person is Jeffrey Meadows. And after Jeffrey will be Yvonne. Yvonne, what's?
I'm just, I've got a 20 minutes. I've listened. Where have you been?
Yvonne Mashak, M A S H A C K.
You said we have an obligation to raise it, but we don't have an obligation to pay the city mayor $600,000 a year.
I will continue with our meeting. Jeffrey Meadows, is he here? No? Yvonne Mashak?
Good evening, council members. First, I want to say that most of the people that I know in the, in the neighborhood didn't even receive this. And this says it's going to be a public hearing. So most of the people thought or came here to hear what you had to say about this. In the body of it, it says you have to either vote for or against it. I think you need to wait. Nobody here can afford this type of increase. And you're right. There are a lot of meetings I didn't come to. But that's not my job either. Your job, your job and your job is to explain things to us. Make it plain. And then let us vote, really vote. We need a ballot, not something put in the body of a letter that says it's going to be a public hearing. And I'm asking you, please, do not, do not vote on this and pass this without input from all of us. Not just you guys, all of us. That's all I have to say.
The last card that I have is Yvonne Harold.
I would like to know why on Hook Street between Ellevada and Amethyst, there has been no cleaning whatsoever. There are weeds growing up almost as tall as I am. And in the past, we did have people who were coming to take care of the rubbish as well as the shrubbery. But it hasn't been done for at least six months. So I'd like to get an answer to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam Mayor, just for the benefit of the last speaker, Doug Matthews is our Public Works Director. Doug, can you give this lady your card, please? The service that she's talking about, I believe, is unrelated to this item. I think is more specific, because I know that area, to the landscaping, maintenance assessment district. And there's certainly issues with respect to funds available to do maintenance, maintenance and landscaping in that area. But Doug is the most knowledgeable and can help you with that.
Thank you. Okay, I do have two other cards. Joseph Vale and then Jeffrey Meadows.
Good evening. You only see me when I think there's a problem. I've known Jim Cox for, what, 40 years or so? And I hardly ever appear here until there's a problem. On this solid waste issue right now, each month, each, excuse me, each year, the city of Victorville takes in $7,97,000 for trash. The proposed increase, the very first one you're talking about, will increase that by $2,350,000 plus. Over the five-year period of time, you're proposing to increase this $3,730,000 for trash. I'd like to go into the trash business. I think we ought to look into finding some other person or some other company to haul away the trash. I remember when Grady Trammell in Victorville was the only trash company in town. And the only people that had to pay him were the ones that chose to use his service. The rest of us hauled our trash to the dump. Now the dump charges $60 a ton approximately for every ton of trash that goes out there. You want to stop the illegal dumping? Start having free trash days and quit having it where people can't afford to take their trash to the dump. People go to the dump, they got to pay a big fee just to take a few things to dump. If they don't have it covered just right, they charge them a fine. We have a problem with the county. Part of the problem with the county is the fees they're charging us as people who go to the, use the dump to dump things. Another thing is the problem we have with the monument, I call it the monument of the stupidity of man in building a dump where you keep covering and doing things like that instead of using the stuff properly. One of the things I want to address is the CPI. I read the contract between Burt Tech and City of Victorville. According to that, Burt, every month, all the money that comes in, Victorville scrapes 15% off the top. Right now, under current system, Victorville receives $1,640,000 plus every year because of collecting trash to have a little department of three or four people running it. Obviously, the city of Victorville is using something for that money besides just that. Under the new system, the city of Victorville will scrape off $1,624,000 plus. That's quite a pay increase for a little department of three or four people. That means the city of Victorville will increase our cost to operate the city by $559,000. Now, the Consumer Price Index that is used in this study that you folks paid a big dollars for, I find it interesting that the only place they looked for CPI was Riverside, Orange County and LA. You mean to tell me San Bernardino County doesn't have a CPI program? I guarantee the same numbers that are used for all these other CPIs can apply to San Bernardino County as well. And I guarantee it won't be as high. What you're trying to do in this mess is jack up the city of Victorville and all the people who live here. There are many people, in, in this thing, one of the things I found was that we have 29,325 people, single-family residences that are paying right now $20.17 a month for trash pickup. There are a number of homes and houses where people pay less because of hardship and things like that. I think that's okay. But when you look at the, excuse me, when we look at the total cost of this and what you're proposing to do to all the people of this Victorville area, there's a problem. One of the things is, the guy was talking about damage to the trucks. It's not damage to the trucks, it's damage to the roads. They figured that the trash truck causes damage to the roads. Okay, well, so what? We're also paying for that service and every one of us who buy gas and do things in this city are paying for our roads. If we're going to start charging, all of us, for the fact that the trash trucks drive over the road, we need to start charging everybody from Apple Valley, Asbury and everybody else, everybody else that comes into town and uses our roads because they're damaging our roads. That's a hokey charge. There's 1,800 things I'd like to say. The illegal dumping thing, that's another issue. If you've ever been down along Starter Wells Road, you'll find trash scattered all over the place. I live across the street from the Murph facility. I appreciate that being there. They paved our road, which was kind of nice. But the problem is, all those trash trucks going down the highway, there's trash blows out of them every time. If you don't believe me, follow a trash truck around. I guarantee you'll see what I'm talking about. They take the vehicles out of the Murph, haul it out to the dump, trash is blowing out the back of that thing like crazy. So it's not just people that's dumping it illegally. It's the trucks that are not doing things right somehow, either through covering or whatever the case may be. But as I said before, you want to stop illegal dumping, provide free dump days. Get people to go out there and do those things. And we have code enforcement. One person brought up code enforcement. I thought that was kind of interesting. We have code enforcement to go around and harass people because of something in their yard that they don't like. Why can't code enforcement go out along Starter Wells Road and follow people who are going out there and dumping their trash? That's where code enforcement should be. As far as voting on this issue tonight, on the notices that I received in the mail, there was one of them that I saw that said, you have to vote on this issue by sending in a complaint. The only way I found that out was because I found some other information I got from the city to deal with this that says you have to send in a vote. So my wife and I typed up letters so she and I could vote on our parcel of property that have that issue. One of the problems, the reason you don't have more than 60 votes is people didn't know. They didn't see the thing, oh, it's another one of the city council things. I don't want to go to those things and waste my time and trouble. Come to city council, we stand up, we argue about things, we talk about things, and 99% of the time, you ignore us. Don't pay a bit of attention to what the people say because you don't hear enough complaints. Well, I guarantee you, you put the complaint data in that little flyer you send out, right? And let the people know, you have to send this back in. If you don't, you're voting for it. If you do, you're voting against it. You do that and I guarantee you, things will change.
I do not have any other cards. So I close the public hearing. This is B2, item B2. No, I still have a lot of other cards, but they are for the other agendas. Okay, so I close the public hearing. Do we have final count?
Yes, we have 68.
68.
68 what?
Protest votes.
How many, how many notices were sent out? Staff, how many notices were sent out?
Madam.
Staff, how many notices were sent out?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, there was approximately 32,005 notices sent out.
The property owners.
Madam, Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, certainly rate increases are never fun. There's never an ideal time to, to address these. But there are processes that were required to follow. And certainly there was comments as to the process and preferring a different way to communicate the vote. I think it's important to know that the, the process that we followed is prescribed by state law. And so we're upheld to follow that in its exact detail, which is what we did in this case. And we worked very closely with legal counsel to help advise the process in both these cases. So sadly, to, to the audience members, I, I believe, is that it's a process that they would prefer different. But we're, we're obligated to follow a certain process, which is the protest voting process. And it's a process that we've followed for some time. We did send out the mailers to 32,500, 32,005 owners of property in Victorville requiring about 16,003 votes in the affirmative. Certainly that doesn't appear to be the case today. But I think it's important to understand what it is we're actually voting on and approving. And, and very generally speaking, there's been some commentance towards the trash company. This is not an issue of the trash company. This is involving our system. And when I say our system, I'm talking about our trash system. It's not only the green can and the blue can. It's the pay costs associated with the actual hauling service. So that might be what we're used to seeing with Victorville disposal driving through our towns. But there's also a cost for the recycling facility that we partnered with the town of Apple Valley and were mandated by the state to actually create a separation of all the recyclables. And it's actually a, a, a system that includes paying for the operations of that. It's a system that pays separately to the county landfill. It also requires an administrative overhead to manage the, the collection of the systems. It also includes a number of facilities that we offer free services targeted specifically to try to reduce the consistent pattern that we're seeing of illegal dumping. A lot of people use that excuse that it costs too much to go to the dump to dispose of property and therefore that's why they're disposing in the, in the desert. Part of our system includes a hazardous recycling facility. And we also have a drop-off facility off of Anacapa Road that's designed to make it easier and eliminate that need or that belief that they need to dirty our desert. And then finally, speaking to the code enforcement, because that was brought up, this does help pay for the, the elements of code enforcement that allow for not only the identification of the problem, but also to, to manage the cleanup. So it's a very broad system. But I think in, in a nutshell, and as to the budget, we talked about the presupposing what the budget's going to be. In, in our workshop last week when we presented to you, it was staff's recommendation and it's a planning document, as we all know. And it's, it's our recommendation as to what's needed to run the system. And with that, it also created a, a belief and an expectation that there are revenues needed. I'll tell you why the revenues are needed and we've identified it in the notice. Since 2008, unfortunately, this city has not raised trash rates. And there's probably a number of reasons why. But what that creates over that 10-year period of time is while we don't collect the additional form of revenue to satisfy that system that I just described, everybody else that's in the system is participating in increasing costs, including the trash company, including the, the landfill, including the materials recycling. So as that's been happening, the costs have been going up, our revenues have been staying flat and therefore it's been forcing us to eat into our reserves. The issue that we have here is a very significant, substantial issue for the council. And we project that with the cash position of the solid waste fund, the actual solid waste fund will run out of cash about the second quarter of this upcoming fiscal year. So with that, and we've used the planning document to help summarize what's needed to run the operation for the next fiscal year. We didn't just dream these numbers up. We've relied on a consultant who is here in the audience to give technical answer to any technical questions you might have. But it's a long exhaustive analysis based upon all of the different rate classes and ratepayers to come up with a fair and equitable. And in this particular case, there is a rate increase in year one. It does recommend, and the rate plan would establish a, a rate plan, just that, for the subsequent four years. That's not automatic and is prescribed by subsequent budgets. So effectively in subsequent budgets, you would be presented with the same question to actually raise rates consistent with the plan. You can choose not to. And certainly in each of those budget sessions we have forthcoming, we would recommend to you what is necessary to maintain the system in accord with the rate plan. I think that touches on.
Just one explanation that I think is important. Individuals have indicated to me that they're voters, they didn't get a notice. Voters don't get notices. This is property owner of record only. And we use the, ma'am, ma'am. Property owners of record and we get those from the county of San Bernardino. And every individual who says they didn't get a notice, we have staff check those. We bring up the record from the county. We look at the record and it may be possible that it got lost. But with 32,000 notices went out, clearly it's an exception if somebody didn't receive a notice. Or they may have a property owner of record address that isn't right. But we do our best. We follow the current law. We cannot make up our own rules. And we certainly apologize if somebody didn't get a notice. But I can't imagine that the number of people who didn't get a notice is so minimal, it would make no difference in the outcome.
Madam Mayor, are we?
Can we have a motion now?
Is it time for a motion?
Yes, it's time for a motion.
I'm, I'm going to move that we adopt resolution 18-01.
Please.
I'm making a motion, please? That we adopt resolution 18-012 to establish the new solid waste rates.
I'm going to second the motion, but I don't agree that all of these should be adopted. I'd like to see them separated. I raised the issue in a here.
for damage to the pavement by the trucks for only the areas that do not have curb and gutter. Staff has looked at that and determined that the trash truck, the mail truck, the homeowner, every individual who drives on the edge of a pavement where there is no curb and gutter is, is damaging and causing the pavement to erode away. Everyone in the city who has curb and gutter paid for it, and now we're expected to pay more to pay for the damages for the people who didn't pay for it. It's complicated. I think it's unfair. I'd like to see the council vote on that separately. While there are some damages that can occur, I think the amount does not match the damages, and I think it's a penalty on people who don't deserve to pay the penalty.
Madam Mayor, if I might, address that comment. The example that Councilmember Cox gave is just that, an example of what we used to help demonstrate the need for the, the, the road mitigation component of this rate, but as it relates to curb and gutter, it's not necessarily specific to properties that have curb and gutter and, and those that don't. Certainly, there's impact to roads in residential areas where there are curb and gutter, and there's continuous movements of these heavy trucks where they're operating on a shorter radius or, or shorter turns, so it's not just as it relates to a truck running over the edge of pavement, it does also have to do with just the frequency of trucks running through residential streets.
So you have heard a motion and a second for an adoption of what you have all said no to, so I entertain a substitute motion to postpone this for another month and bring it back for another public hearing and a protest vote to be allowed. Is there a second?
There be no second, the motion dies.
Is that a second, the substitute motion?
There be no second, the motion dies.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we move on to...
No.
We have to have a vote. We have a motion and a second on the floor, and it's time for any further questions or comments at this point.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, the council hasn't had the opportunity to ask questions, and this is where I will take the time.
I have Mr. Negrete over here that...
Okay, sorry, apologize.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I sure do appreciate everyone sharing their opinion, and contrary to what most people believe, that we don't listen or we don't hear you, that's wrong. So it's, there's courtesy here, there's decorum that's expected, shouting and, and getting threats. If that was a threat, yes, I'm up for reelection, but some of us aren't, and we still have a responsibility to the city to do things the right way. And just hear me out, I know you guys are mad. When I took this position, I decided, you know what, as a, as a private citizen, I hate anything where we have to raise rates, just the concept itself, okay? But since we've been here, since I've been here almost four years now, I'd like to ask just a rhetorical question. I am not asking anybody a particular question individually, but I'd like to just ask a rhetorical question. If this city has doubled in size since 2000, let's take the police as an example, we had 47 deputies with 60,000 people, and we paid for that through the general fund. Our cost for deputies back then in 2000 was $6 million. It's not $6 million anymore, and we, we have 73 deputies or somewhere around that, and I'm not picking on the fire department by any means, I'm giving you an example. We doubled in population since 2000 with no way to address the explosion, the population explosion, and the demand on services. So I understand the anger, I, I get it, but here's the thing, you, you hear things, and then maybe people don't really take it at heart. If we haven't raised rates since, when was it, 2008, 10 years? 10 years, and, and you know what? Quite frankly, this is the same thing with landscape maintenance fees, which are a lot less, but you guys get notices on whether or not you want to raise your landscape maintenance fees to take care of the common areas in the city's neighborhoods, and 80% of the time, people vote no. I get it, I get it, it's no problem, but your landscape maintenance fees, the whole system was set up when gas was a dollar a gallon and the minimum wage was $4.25, and religiously, that is not approved by the, by the residents, they just, they would rather have less services than raise the rates. I get it, I get it, I hear you. My friends, my neighbors, they tell me the same stuff, and I sit down with them, and I look them in the eye, explain the situation. There's no conspiracy, nobody's hiding anything here. You take on something like the airport, you're going to have cost issues. You have your own water system, which we've unfortunately raised the rates, but I thought we did a great job with the tier system. These folks up here did a great job with water. Well, now we're on to solid waste and then sewer. And here's the other thing, we can't control some of the costs that are passed on to us and, and which we're going to talk about on the next item, so I'll hold off on that, but my point is, we hear you, but this is something that we have to consider for the future, and we can't just go along with all of our city services not raising the rates. We are not a built-out city, we're a half-built-out city. When this city is built out and we can count on our homeowners' property tax and revenues and sales tax, and we know what it is, and we know what the demand of the services to the residents are, and we don't have to worry about any more growth because we've grown out, like in other places down the hill, then we get into a much better situation, but we're not there yet. And so I understand, I, I would say one thing, though, people probably missed the point where initially the cost, or the increased estimates were going to be much higher. So we're looking out for you to, to do what we can to, to make this reasonable. I would just say to the city staff going forward, we cannot make up for, for years and years of neglect all at once. So obviously, this is not fun for anybody, and this is not an easy decision, but you know what? That's the responsibility for, these are tough decisions, so I just, I want to say, contrary to what I'm hearing, we do hear you.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox.
I think she still, Blanca still wanted us.
Yeah, so I, I have several questions myself about this item. However, I would be remiss if I fail to mention that during public hearings, which is one that we are in right now, the audience does not have a time limit as we do with public comment, so please feel free to make your point as long as it takes so that you are heard. For staff, did Measure K follow the Prop 218 regime or regulations?
Measure K was a ballot measure.
A fee base for following 218?
Was not a fee base, it's not pursuant to Prop 218.
What governed it?
Probably California government code.
So there was no protest vote in 218 for the special election?
Oh, that was an actual election.
So has the city addressed the trucks and the flying trash by any chance? Have those concerns been addressed in the last year?
I'm not aware of that, an issue being brought to us, but certainly we'll continue to monitor, and we'll work closely with BRTech to make sure that that issue is mitigated if it's an issue.
So can we say that within the next 90 days, we'll have a discussion with the trash company to see how that's being addressed?
Absolutely.
And then, has the city considered the free dump days besides the two, five-item pickup days?
We actually, and I'm glad to say, we have a free dump day scheduled this Saturday at Victor Valley High School, hours between 8:00 AM and 1:00 PM.
That's once a year or multiple times a year?
We have them multiple times a year.
How is the, how is the audience notified about things like this, besides here we asking?
Quite a, quite a, quite a bit of effort. We do send notices in our bills, part of the mailer. We also mark it through our media portals. I also share it with you generally here at the council as a part of my city manager comments.
And for hook and amethysts, oh, you already answered that question, how much do we take in currently in trash, and how much will it increase if this item passes tonight?
In the staff report, we've identified that the year one increase for residential, not commercial, is $6.68. That's from $20.17 to $26.85. Interestingly, I think for comparison purposes, and not that this was a driver, we certainly weren't shooting to be anywhere close to the neighboring jurisdictions, but we do benchmark against the neighboring jurisdictions to make sure there aren't anything, or there isn't anything out of whack. Certainly, we found that this rate increase actually gets us closer to what the other jurisdictions are charging.
Right.
Actually, we're charging less than everybody in the Victor Valley.
So let me clarify my question.
And the only one cheaper is Barstow, but they do subsidize their rates.
Right, that was in the study. My reason for asking this question is I had, we had someone that we heard that was saying that there was a 15%, and that we were taking measures with that money, and that we weren't allocating it properly, so I wanted to know currently, when he mentioned a figure of so many millions, how many millions was that, that per se we have? Because he read the report, and I'm assuming that that's not in the study, but that's in, in the contract that he was stating between the city and the trash, so that's what I was alluding to.
The, yeah, so the number is in the study. I'm sure we can pull it up really quickly. It was in the study, and it was disclosed to you, the 15% that we're talking about, certainly I would tell you, is not being spent improperly. In fact, that's going into your administrative charges, which includes everything from the customer service component to actually doing the code enforcement and actually doing the illegal dump pickups. There's more to it than that, I'm sure Sophie's looking like she wants to share.
We do have the consultant in the audience, Kim, who has the full study. What you have with the staff report is excerpts from the full solid waste study, and I think you're asking what the total revenue generated for, for example, this current fiscal year is, and what it is going to be in 1819, and I think Kim from NBS has more details on, on what that looks like.
Yeah, so currently, the city is bringing in about $16.5 million in revenue to the solid waste utility in total. After the first rate adjustment, it would be, oh, sorry, about $20 million, and then it goes up by a half a million, $600,000 a year in future years.
So about an increase of $3.5 million for the year?
Yes, in the first one, and then in later years, it's, it's less, it's just like a CPI adjustment, around 3%, 4%.
And that's considering the 2,000 residential homes? Residential, industrial, and commercial, or just residential?
It's in total.
Total.
All of the customers, so the 33,000 that were mailed notices.
Okay, thank you. And does Victorville take that 15% base on the contract that we have with the trash and the city, which is increasing, and are those fees applied to, you, you said administrative charges? When you say administrative charges, are we talking about personnel salaries?
Yes, among other things.
And is that inclusive of the 5% yearly increase that we have to our employees without taking measure or performance in consideration based on the contracts?
I believe you're asking if that includes the annual cost of living adjustment that is sometimes given to the employees?
Okay, the cost of living, perhaps?
Right, it would be proposed for 3.8% in the next fiscal year? Is that the 5% that you're referring to, maybe?
The 5% is something annually that the employees receive, and then I was trying to see if that's where we're trying to kind of, you know, bring in the money revenues to make sure that we're keeping our staff up to par.
I think the 5% that you're referencing is, is probably more so related on the individual basis of merits associated with performance, but maybe to answer the question better than it's being asked, is that what's actually projected in those costs is the actual cost of labor, and cost of labor fluctuates dependent upon the type of person in the position. Sometimes you've got long tenures, sometimes you've got new positions, but the inflator that we factored in here is designed to capture all of that.
Okay, let me see if I kind of create a narrative with there, because I see what the people are saying when they come up here, and they're not happy with this increase of that fee, because it seems like it's going to help bridge that gap between our administrative staff. However, when it was said beforehand, it was stated that the reason we needed this is because of the infrastructure, and when you say infrastructure, it's the tangible items that we're using versus the actual administrative costs that are going to make sure that personnel is doing their job. That's what I'm hearing, and, and I'm putting both together for, for the sense of understanding what is the issue and why we should or shouldn't raise any, any fees. The next question that I have is, is the passing of this item instrumental to satisfying the proposed 2018, 2019 fiscal budget?
It's what's currently contemplated in staff's recommendation for the 1819 fiscal budget, and certainly if the council chose not to follow staff's recommendation and tonight not adopt these rates, we would go back to our budget document and revise it downward to reflect an inability to rely on these new revenues, and I would suspect that that recommendation would come with some pretty dramatic recommendations on cuts to keep the system self-sufficient or functioning, which could even result in a reduction in service, I hate to say.
So to tag along with that question, further reserve, do we have any reserves in this particular funding, or have we exhausted all of it? And if we have exhausted all of it, why haven't we kept a level enough so when there's an impact of such greatness, which, you know, 10 years, you exhaust everything and it causes a great impact? So today, we're wrestling with the idea, was there a lack of responsibility, or were we responsible enough subsidizing a lot of what we're going to be increasing now? And how do you mediate that between today having a lot of consumers saying, "Hey, what's the issue? Why are you raising more fees? We can't, we're on a fixed income?"
So, yeah, the issue with reserves, that's a large part of why we're here. The reserves have been depleted, and you're at a point with that reserve cash, you will run out of cash, we're projecting about the second quarter of the upcoming fiscal year. Certainly not ideal, I, I couldn't necessarily say responsible or irresponsible by not raising rates in the past, but certainly dealing with these types of rate increases, rate plans, they're, they're never popular, and of course, as you know, we just came out of a pretty meaningful recession, so probably the opportunity would have been difficult even, even back then. But notwithstanding that, I think what is important in the rate plan that you have today, and so long as we can continue to keep the rate plan alive by not allowing it to expire at five years without a renewal, this rate plan actually does contemplate not only raising sufficient revenue to maintain the system, but it also raises revenue to help replenish your cash reserves, so that if there is a, some kind of downtick in the economy or something wild, unforeseeable happens that causes you to need additional cash, this rate plan actually allows you to build up that reserve for that rainy day, if you will, and I think it's probably most evidenced in when you look at the comparison of rate increase in year one versus the subsequent four years, and the reason why the rate increase in year one feels so dramatic is because your funding needs for capital, your funding needs for increased costs and service, but you're also funding a need to replenish your reserve, reserve funds.
Mayor, I'd like to follow the question, please.
I'm sorry, I haven't finished my questions, and as a public hearing, I have the right to continue with my questions.
What is the...
That's the rules, and I...
Any, any council member has the privilege of closing debate by calling and moving with the previous...
the previous question.
So.
Move the previous question.
Accepted.
End debate and get a chance to vote.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy.
You have a hearing, how do you just stop people from voicing their concerns? You think you have the power to do that?
The public hearing has been closed.
I wasn't finished with my questions.
Stand, but this is debate at the council level and with respect to debate at council member.
It was never limited. Was it limited in the beginning?
No, it's not limited. The council member has called the question. They're allowed to do that at any time. And if there's a fourth, fifth vote.
You guys see what I feel? We feel it together.
That is parliamentary procedure.
Parliamentary procedure is one thing to be nice as another. I asked a question in my comments earlier, how do we get the CPI with Orange County, Riverside, and LA? Why can't we get a CPI for San Bernardino County? If this young lady can answer that question, that'd be a tremendous help.
I'll call you tomorrow and answer the questions. Very simple, very simple answer.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
You didn't ask for comment. There's a procedure in our policy.
I did the first time.
You finished the question and then we have comments.
I will continue on.
So I'm going to continue with my comment based on our policy that we all, that you guys adopted and I didn't.
I will continue.
Okay, that's what it was, so I'm going to continue.
The question has been called. You are now, if the mayor so deems you.
We are supposed to go to comments, okay?
After the motion was made, the question that the city clerk made was, are there any comments or questions? So you are in the comment, question period.
It's time to vote.
I'm sorry.
We haven't voted, so we're about to vote. We're arguing who's talking right now, so we'll vote now.
I will have order here. Sir, please. Sir.
Can we ask him to be removed?
Yeah, this is getting too far out of hand. No, please. No.
Out of hand, out of order.
Madam clerk, continue.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Let's go to the big argument now.
Motion carries with Ms. Gomez voting no.
We move on to item B three. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against amending and revising portions of Title X of the Victorville Municipal Code relating to rates, fees, and charges for city sewer service. Madam clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council conduct the public hearing, determine if a majority protest exists at the close of the public hearing. If no majority protest exists, find ordinance number twenty-three seventy-eight exempt from environmental review under sections one five zero six one B three and one five two seven three of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines and introduce ordinance number twenty-three seventy-eight for adoption and first reading by title only.
Thank you. Are there any questions of council members of staff?
Anyone have a question?
I have a question of the chair. Would it be helpful if the staff gives an explanation prior to the public hearing? Would it be helpful at all to anyone?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if it helps, our consultant, Kim Baylor, from NBS, is actually prepared with a presentation, if it helps.
Well, we can give it a try. Hopefully that will.
I simply, there's a lot of questions that are coming up and some of them have a simple answer, but this is a public hearing for individuals to protest. And for example, cost of living, which is we use. City council policy is to use the Los Angeles, Riverside, Orange County, whatever it is, Riverside, San Bernardino County. We've used it for years. It's the same thing that San Bernardino uses. It's standard, it's published, we've never varied from that in forty years. That's the answer to that. There's a lot of answers to things that are brought up that we can debate, but this isn't the debate, this is actually the hearing for individuals. But I thought maybe by staff wanting to make a short presentation in the initial, we don't make this up, we follow the law, we follow the law carefully, we have to follow the law, there is a procedure that we are held to. I thought maybe it would help if the staff would give a short explanation.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protam and members of the council, Madam Mayor, thank you. I think it would be a good idea. This is a much more complex, much more involved rate plan for the next five years. Similarly, it's a rate plan that deals with not having had raised rates as well for the sewer collection system, about four hundred and fifty miles, a sewer collection system. Kim Baylor is our consultant and I'd like to have her come up and give you that overview because she can speak as to the technicals that go into the rates. But as we've discussed in previous meetings, effectively what you do have is a rate plan that identifies what the operating and maintenance needs are of the sewer collection system. And a lot of people don't give a lot of thought about the sewer collection system, but that's all your pipes in the ground. And some of them are older than fifty years old. And they require routine maintenance, routine inspection, routine cleaning, and fixing. All of that is largely stuff, I think, unseen by the public, but becomes very costly. Also, you know, one of the things that we've done recently is we've just completed an inspection, a visual inspection, where we sent a camera down every inch of every pipe in the city to get a condition assessment. And interestingly, it told us a lot of things about the condition inside the pipes, some of which we perhaps were hoping not to hear because it equated into needing to do some very meaningful, meaty improvements, improvements that this rate plan actually contemplates over the next five years. So as we talk about rate plan over the next five years, it's also a plan to invest in the system, make upgrades, and collect sufficient revenues, not day one, but over the course of that rate plan period, to make those improvements. So with that is a simple preamble. Kim, are you, you want to give a little brief as to what we're dealing with? Presentation.
Okay, so we did the sewer rate study. We've been working with staff for over a year on this study. We looked at all of the operating and capital improvement costs that the city has planned for the sewer utility. We looked at cash reserves and where the utility needs to be from a financial perspective. And we have a brief presentation. Slide up here shows the proposed rate table for the next five years. We don't have an updated presentation here tonight, but basically, the city has, is collecting about sixteen, seventeen million dollars in revenue for the sewer utility right now. The city has a number of capital improvements that need to be completed in the next five years. We're planning for about twenty-two, twenty-two and a half million dollars in capital improvements. Operating expenses are increasing. The city has also experienced cost increases from the regional treatment provider, VVWRA, and has not passed that on to the rate payers for the past five years at least. So we're, we need to collect more revenue to cover the cost increases. We're also drawing down reserves. Currently, this fiscal year, the city started with twenty-two million dollars in cash reserves. That's expected to go down to twelve million dollars at the end of this year with the operating and capital improvements that the city has planned. We'd recommend that the city hold at least six million dollars in reserves for the sewer utility. And so the financial plan that we put together assumes that is the case. So there have been a number of increases in costs, operating costs in the past five years since the last rate increase was implemented. And there are major capital improvements that the city needs to do for the sewer utility. So those are the main reasons for the need for the rate increases and to maintain appropriate reserve funds. Are there any questions about the study? I'm here to answer them.
A call to the question? I call for that question. For the same one that Kennedy did, that all you fucking understood, but except me? That's what happened?
I have a question of staff before we open the public hearing. This five-year rate study is, if the city council approves it, do they automatically approve that rate increase every year or is it a rate increase one year and then they have to visit it every year as a part of the budget?
It's revisited every year as a part of the budget.
It's not automatic?
It's not automatic. You do have the ability to decide whether to implement it or not. And the appropriate question at the budget time would be whether or not we're actually meeting or exceeding or not meeting the actual cash needs of the system. But you do have a decision at the budget to implement.
Thank you. I have no more questions. Madam, recommend we go to the public hearing.
Yes, I have questions. The same question as I asked in item B two. We're talking about the LMAD. So you can find the acronym for LMAD to define it for the public because I'm sure they don't quite understand the LMAD. Explain the LMAD process. And we're going to go back to Prop 218 because there's a back and forth switch of does it apply or does it not apply? And this is the devil in the details where I would like the audience to pay very close attention. When I speak, believe me, pay attention only because this is a strategical game that's being played up here, if you haven't caught on to it. Very strategic. Watch who follows who when we speak and you will see the game. And if you know how to play it, you will win. We need two players there and here.
Stick to your point, please.
So my question here is LMAD and Prop 218 rules applicable to facilitating and impacting the sewer rate fees that are going to be increased today with a majority vote that we already see.
I can answer that, that the Prop 218 process applies both to this and both to the LMAD.
Would you please speak louder? I can barely hear you.
The Prop 218 applies to both this process and the LMAD, which is a landscape maintenance assessment district. But Prop 218 has different methods for how you calculate the votes and the protest votes. With respect to LMADs, it actually requires that the votes be counted at the time of the actual public hearing. There is no similar requirement with respect to fees and charges also addressed by Prop 218. This process has been done in total accordance with Prop 218, as was the LMAD process.
So in this one, we already counted the ballots, too?
That is correct.
So for B three, we already had the clerk count out how many ballots?
I haven't gotten to that point yet.
I'm asking a question to the city attorney. He said yes, so I'm asking again in case I heard him wrong.
I don't know how many ballots have been counted. My answer to your question was the ballots have been counted. That is correct.
So they have been counted?
That is correct.
How many ballots was that?
I believe there were thirty-two thousand, some number like that that was sent out.
I thought that was item B two.
I think there was a similar number for.
Item B three now. I need clarification because this is getting very messy now.
I believe actually it's in the staff report. Let me look.
That number is twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and nine, and it is in the staff report.
Twenty-seven thousand, three hundred protest votes that were counted today by the city clerk? That was my question.
No, that's how many, you asked the question, how many ballots were sent out? That's how many ballots were sent out.
Protest votes.
I believe, what's the number on the protest votes?
We have protest votes?
We received fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
So we received fifty-seven and they were already counted.
That is correct.
It slipped, it slipped right here where you just did it right in front of us then, right? You called it out. I just, I didn't know that you guys were doing that as we were speaking. Was that the process that was going on?
No, you asked a question. We answered your question.
Yeah, I'm asking a different question now.
What's your question now?
The question is, as we were speaking, the city clerk was counting the fifty-seven opposition votes, contest votes, as we were speaking.
Oh, as I mentioned previously, she counted those before the meeting started.
Okay, the B three item was before.
As was the B two.
The B one item was before and the B two item was during this session right now.
No, if you recall, the LMAD was done during the public hearing, B one, counted during the public hearing. It's an LMAD. Per 218, you have to count those votes at the time of the public hearing. Per Prop 218, with respect to fees and charges, which is B two and B three, you can count them at any time that you receive the ballots.
Got it. So B two and B three were counted beforehand, nobody witnessed it, and B one was the one that we just witnessed a couple of items ago. That's what it is.
People actually did witness the counting of B two and B three.
No, we didn't witness the B two and B three counting because it wasn't done in front of us.
It was done in a public area and there were witnesses to the counting.
Okay, yeah, but it wasn't during our dais session.
It's not required to be during the dais session.
That was the question, that was the clarification. It was not done during our dais, it was done before we started the meeting, the B and C because there's too many items, twenty-seven thousand, I guess, to count.
And that is consistent with Proposition 218.
I wasn't, I wasn't counting that, it was not inconsistent. I'm getting clarification to what we're doing in the present moment versus when we're out there. Clarification.
I don't know how more simply I can put this.
You're not putting in any simple.
B one, the counts were done during the public hearing.
All I was doing is narrating what you were saying for my clarification.
B two and B three were counted prior to the meeting.
Not listening to you anymore. I already got it. Okay, the next thing is standing in unity with the residents and in the future for more marketing and issues that are interest in the public's interest. I would like to recommend to staff that we consider advertising like we did during our Measure K when the city was looking for an increase in tax. Today, it looks like our votes can't really be casted because it looks like the city of Victorville residents are not being apprised, to my knowledge and my understanding, of what it is that the residents need to get to be able to have full disclosure and be fully participated. Sixty-eight and fifty-seven votes is not represented, not even a one percent of who we should have here today. So I blame the city council, which includes me, for the lack of advocating for marketing, for you to be here and have your voices heard. So we need more people to keep the council accountable. This is not acceptable to keep saying that it's based on California rules, based on California rules, but when we do Measure K, we extend and we don't say California rules, we talk about it and say Prop 218. And we go ahead and spend twenty-five thousand dollars on flyers, which the homes got, but we don't get interest when it comes to sewer and trash. And that, to me, is not a public service and we shouldn't be here if we cannot advocate on your behalf.
Just making this up as you go along.
Yeah, I think so. If you think that, why does the public authorities actually write? And the city didn't pay for any Measure K advertising.
Can we move to the public hearing? Can we? Can we go to the public hearing?
Just be quiet, please.
You should be quiet and follow your own orders. Don't discriminate against who you want out and who you want in here.
Okay, Madam clerk.
When it's not advantageous to you.
How many protest votes have we received so far so I can stay in line here with my agenda?
We have received fifty-seven protest votes.
Thank you so much. At this time, I open the public hearing. And I do have some cards. The first one is Jeffrey Meadows. And after him will be Joseph Vale. Jeff, he's gone? Okay. Joseph Vale and after Joseph Craig Garcia.
The microphone is not on. Would someone please assist him?
There we go. It's interesting that you hear what you want to hear. As I said before, with the solid waste, the people didn't know they were supposed to send something in to vote. That's why you only had fifty-five or sixty letters. I didn't realize it until a second thing came around that I saw, I said, oh, we have to send in a vote. I guarantee you, had you sent out a notice where people could read that and see what it was and maybe highlight it, because this is not normal. I've been in Victorville since nineteen sixty-five. We've never had deals like this come up where you send in a deal, a letter of protest that's counted as a vote. Never. And now all of a sudden we've got this and this is being shoved down our throats. Well, related to the sewer system, I've spent some time at Logan Oles out at the sewer plant, finding out what was going on and what was taking place and all of that. I can see that Mr. Kennedy is very. I can see that Mr. Kennedy is very interested, so go ahead and take your nap. Thirty-four employees at the Victor Valley Wastewater Association, their pay is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. That's what it says right here. They have thirty-four employees. Average personnel pay per year, a hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars. That's pretty good pay. And I realize that you say everybody uses the Orange County Riverside LA CPI. That's a good excuse for not doing what we should be doing. We should be doing things raised on what San Antonio County does. We don't live in LA. We're not living in houses in LA that are worth six hundred thousand dollars for a nine-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot house. We live in the high desert. That's why people out of LA are moving up here, because the cost of living is less. The CPI would be less. You're using these numbers incorrectly. Right now, Victor Valley currently collects eight-point-eight million dollars a year from twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and nine single-family residences. This does not include multifamily units. At this point in time, you're looking at a surplus of two-point-two-eight-three million plus. I realize that the Victor Valley wastewater plant is necessary. When it was first being built, I lobbied for it. I ran for the sewer district. I was trying to help get it done. I'm a hundred percent in favor of it. In talking with Logan Olds, Victorville pays only sixty percent approximately of the cost of operating VVWRa. It's my understanding that Victorville is one to actually extricate themselves from that JPA. Also note that Victorville has a separate wastewater treatment plant over at George Air Force Base that is supposed to operate a whole lot more efficiently than the VVWRa. If that's the case, and if that really is a doable situation, why are we looking at doing something more in that respect rather than jacking everybody's fees up for the VVWRa? According to what I see in this chart, we're looking at raising the rates for next year by six dollars and fourteen cents a month. After that, with the extra increase, it'll go up smaller, but that'll be eleven dollars and nine cents more per month than what it is now. I realize it's not something you really care about, so I'll sit down and shut up.
Craig Garcia? Is he here?
You didn't take your time and look at the last one, so I don't think you're going to look at this one. But same question. Is the passing of this item instrumental in satisfying the proposed 218, 219 fiscal budget? Has the city and the budget organizers already assumed that this item will be voted on and passed? Can the city guarantee that all affected property owners and businesses have received this notice? Are we to conclude that by approving this notice, we are approving rate increases for the next five years? Well, you already answered that question. Will the city entertain an option to review sewer rates from year to year? What happened to trash? How come you didn't entertain that option then?
Same thing applies to trash. Same thing applies. It's every year. It's not automatic. That was...
But you just said you approve five years.
Oh, no, no. This is authorizing five years.
Point of order, Mr. Cox. You are not supposed to be violating the Brown Act violation at this moment. I'd like to place that to the record.
I'll see it at the end of the year, probably.
I don't know what the violation would be.
The issue in the Brown Act is you cannot be responding to anyone but to refer to staff. You cannot have a conversation like Mr. Cox has been having at this moment's time. You know that and we all know that.
Actually, what I know is you can have...
We all know that with the Brown Act. That is a violation.
The rule you're talking about...
We stated it before, and for the record, I just wanted to state it.
Blanca, please.
I'm not going to argue with...
The rule you're talking about applies to public comment, not to public hearings.
I have the floor. Do Jim Cox and Jim Kennedy still sit on the Victor Valley Water Reclamation Board?
But in a meltdown.
Recusal has been applied for other items. Would recusal apply for the VVWRa involvement? We didn't accuse you two. He didn't ask for you guys to be recused for the solid waste, so he probably won't ask you two to be recused for the VVWRa. It should have at least came up because he asked you guys to recuse yourself for Green Tree. And you did. If we create a budget every year, why are we projecting sewer uses for the next five years? How much revenue has been applied to our sewer systems over the past five years? Is the city trying to recover revenue that should have been allocated through a different process? Why are commercial and industrial rates the same as a single-family dwelling rate? Single-family dwelling usage is predictable while commercial and industrial are far less predictable. Why are multifamily dwellings lower than the single-family dwelling rate? The increase for the first year is approximately twenty-four percent, increasing to fifty-three percent by the year twenty-two. These charges seem arbitrary. Can the city provide justification for these projected charges? Has the city contemplated a year-by-year increase? That's another question. With respect to this subject, it seems that infrastructure has not been applied. How can the city, in all truthfulness, project a five-year application? We have been paying for sewer rates for the past sixteen years, reflecting the increases applied for the VVWRa and the additional fee in 2008 for sewer replacement. These changes are abrupt and the property owners should have been provided a precursor to the beginning of, at the beginning of the year, fiscal year, stating their intention to raise the rates. We got that notice for the solid waste, which was less. The increase for the solid waste is less. And then we got the sewer one, which is a lot more. I'm thinking you might have thought we just pushed them both aside because we seen the first one and thought there'd be the same thing. But like I said before, I never got something that said fifty-plus, fifty percent plus in the mail. And I think that's been verified by a couple of people. They've never seen anything like this. It's something you guys... And I know, I know, other municipalities do it. I know they do it. But it's the first one I ever got. That's why I'm wondering why you guys are sticking to a five-year plan, you know? Options. I gave you options for solid waste, the smaller receptacle, the year, just give me a raise, I mean, raise my rates for the first year. But you're telling me that you're going to raise these rates over five years. It's a scary thing to get a notice like that. But I'm hoping you guys, because the questions on the first one's more unanswered. On the first one, you didn't have time to answer them. So I thought maybe you would take that into consideration and review them a little bit. But hoping you guys review this. And I'm hoping that you've seen enough people a little upset about these raises, increases.
I do not have any more cards.
Yes, you do. You have one for me.
No, I don't.
Yes, you do, because I provided it beforehand.
What?
I asked for that to be given to them. In public comment. And that's what I said. Please provide this for public comment.
We're not in public...
They are doing public comment.
No, this is a public hearing.
Well, I can speak during a public hearing as an individual, and that's what I decided to do.
We need to control. Blanca, please.
No, you need to accept that I can also be an individual.
If she wants to go down...
Okay? I don't like to be treated different.
If she wants to go down, her card says she wants a public comment. If it's a public hearing, she can go down and speak as a member.
Yes, she can, but she doesn't have to...
As an individual.
Pause total chaos every time she opens her mouth.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members and staff. My name is Blanca Gomez, and I'm here as an individual because I like to be heard as well.
What is your city of residence?
Is that something that you ask everyone or are you doing another Brown Act violation?
Could you give us your address on your comment card, please?
When you ask that to other people, do the same to me.
They do it.
I'm glad it's humorous.
I'd like your address on your comment card, please.
No, there is none of that. So I'd like to start by... I'm sorry, you're interrupting me. This is my time. Okay, this is my time. I need an address. So what I'd like to start off with is it's very important for us to be involved when it comes to these...
Gloria, she does not have to provide an address.
When we are doing the solid waste on item B3 increases. If you haven't witnessed what is going on, it's very difficult to have council members listen to council members and the community to have someone like a council member represent me. I voted too, and I think I voted for a couple of you as well because I had faith in you. And I still have a sliver of it. That's why I'm here as a constituent, paying my respects to all of you. So thank you for taking the time to represent me as well, even though you just laughed about it. I was trying to be respectful back. Anyways, for item B3, there's a lot of questions. And believe me, I will email these questions to staff. Hope I don't overburden you, but we have a lot of concerns from the citizens, and these are my concerns as well. The first question that was asked was the passing of the item. And this item is the same with the forecasts. When the concerns of the constituents are, when did you forecast something that we haven't voted upon and you take it as a done deal? Allow the citizens to be heard. We're not heard when we have forecasted that as a part because that means that either staff understands how the majority of us, how the majority of them will be voting. And I think that does a disservice. And I know that was not the intent of the staff. The staff works very hard and very diligent and provides multiple hours combined to all five council members in regards to the agenda items and running a city with over a hundred and thirty thousand people. The next question that is, is has the city and the budget organizers assumed for this item, B3, that it is going to be voted and passed? I wish I could say no, but the facts state otherwise. Please be conscientious when you are putting stuff together because you will always have one voice at the dais and you will have multiple voices with the residents, guaranteed. The next question is can the city guarantee that all affected property, affected property owners and businesses will have received a notice? On multiple occasion, Councilmember Blanca Gomez, every single Monday from nine in the morning to ten o'clock, has offered and rendered her services one hour every Monday, open to the public. As a matter of fact, she has even taken this time for staff members to come out and answer the questions for people such as Mr. Osuna in different languages. And I thank you for that. So once again, Councilmember Gomez opens herself up every single Monday for a minimum one hour with staff and welcomes the public to have these questions answered, and we're learning together and we're becoming a voice. The next one, are we to conclude that by approving this notice, we are approving the rate increases for the next five years? I think I've heard a couple of concerns. I felt like today we were actually in a workshop. I don't think we're in a public hearing. It feels like a workshop to me because we have so many questions at the tail end of a vote that's obligatory, it seems, because council members cannot speak upon what is happening, or so it seems, whether it's rules or regulations that stop us from speaking directly to our constituents and they feel ignored, or the fact may be that we are being ignored for some regard. Let's take the time to reach out to them, do more forums together as a team to let them know that we are here to service them. We all have different talents. The next one, if yes to the above, is the city preparing and presenting this budget for the next five years? Do we even consider a one-year, perhaps? Because if we look at the ten-year span, and that ten-year span was being subsidized with reserve funds, what we get to start thinking is we have so much litigation. Could it be possible that the anticipated VVWRa litigation that is right now anticipated, taking some of that IWWTP, which is the wastewater infrastructure that we're putting that? Could it be that the citizens are putting their own narrative and perhaps we need to bridge that gap? Instead of thinking that we are hiding stuff because a lot of us might be thinking that, why not open yourselves to those meetings individually through email? The next one is, will the city entertain an option to review those year to year? The answer wasn't yes or no. The answer wasn't even directed to staff for that person to feel like he or she was being heard. Maybe those types of recommendations will help ease that we have a hierarchy between a council member and the rest of the community when it is not that way. And I see what they see, the laughter, the joking, perhaps the lack of... Maybe you're laughing because it's something funny. Maybe it has nothing to do with the person speaking there. Perception is everything. So that's why I take this spot to kind of see what they see. Maybe I ignore them at times too, and I don't even know that I'm ignoring them. Maybe it's time for us to take their shoes and understand what they're going through when they're on fixed incomes. They don't have seven houses. They don't live by the golf course. They don't have their forty-hour job CPA after, you know, their inheritance. A lot of these people are on fixed income, as so am I. So perhaps I have a sliver of an understanding of why, when a council member votes, votes a certain way. The next question, do Jim Cox and Mr. Kennedy sit on that VVWR board? Do they? It won't be responded to. But as Councilmember Gomez has said in the past, you, as a resident, can pull every single committee that we sit on, find out how much money we make, and actually go and sit on those meetings and see how we're casting our votes. Are we falling asleep? Are we paying attention? Have we been in office too long where we no longer care? Where is that meeting? What is the brief thing about that meeting? Give us a thirty-second. What happened at VVWRa last Monday at eight-thirty, if that's what the case was? We're not getting any briefings? We feel ostracized, othered, and marginalized. Many of us do. So anger comes out because probably there's a lack of understanding with what happens with that line over there and this line over here. You can bridge that gap. The next question, recusal. Are you supposed to be recusing yourself? What do the people see when two of you walk away? They talk about the golf course. We just had the city attorney write to the FPP not too long ago in March, why you had to recuse yourself because you lived five hundred feet away. Councilmember Gomez requested that information and the attorney reneged, saying, no, Blanca, you have had enough information. What kind of response is that? If you give that type of response to a council member, what kind of response will you give to the people who elect you into office or the people that give you your salary? Your salaries are all based on taxpayers. The next question is, if we create a budget every year, why are we projecting those sewers in the next five years? It's time after time, five years. Is five years a magic number? Because ten years was a magic number when we were subsidizing, but now it's the five years. I'm sure we will have staff address that no later than when Mrs. Gomez gets back and asks that question, if she remembers to ask that question when she gets up there. Next question, how much revenue has been applied to our sewer systems over the past five years? I would alter that question and say, what collateral and what bonds do we have up to pay for a sewer system? What is the debt ratio that we have for that? Sometimes people look at the budget, and if we don't understand the budget and we make our own conscientious stories and we weave them in, and then we see people being ostracized, we create our narrative. We want to be transparent. Whatever transparency means in the definition of the city of Victorville, it is clear that since September nineteen sixty-two, this population has not defined what transparency is. And we see it today in the fee increase and we see it in sixty-eight protesters. How much in the history of the city of Victorville have you even had sixty-eight or fifty-seven votes? And speak as long as they can speak with mentioning that during a hearing, you have unlimited time. You can come up here and spend one hour and give your grievances about this topic. That is not transparency. Transparency is saying you have unlimited time. Let the people speak. If they're only here once a year because of that and that satisfies their gut and they've been here for two hours, you've done their job because you've listened to their satisfaction. It is not our definition. It's the definition of the residents. That's what we try to implement. In the city, who is trying, is the city trying to recover revenue that should be allocated through a different process? This reminds me again of litigation. I'm happy SEC is... process? This reminds me again of litigation. I'm happy SEC is almost nearly gone, but it's still on our books. ComAv is almost gone, but it's still on our books. We've signed something. But it still shows that we're in litigation today. Why? Because it still shows it on our closed session items. To be transparent means we update stuff. My job as a council member when I'm sitting at that dais is 24/7, but that's my choice. I don't have any other jobs or live on welfare, like the mayor has said. So, I appreciate that, and I wanted to clear that. Other people have a full-time job. 130,000 people with children, people that can and cannot vote, are coming right here today to spend their time wastefully when none of us are listening to each other. So, how are we trying to recover the revenues? We looked at our balances with revenues and expenditures. How has it been allocated? When has this city council, in its history, spent with residents going through that forecasting of a year-by-year pre-workshop? When have you been challenged to sit with any one group to do that, to allow for understanding, or create a class that would benefit the general public? What is transparency in your eyes? What is transparency in the eyes of residents? Why are commercial and industrial rates the same as a single-family dwelling? Well, we'll say like Mr. Kennedy, you weren't here and you didn't pay attention. I'm sorry, were you here and you paid attention, and did you give any feedback? And start calling your residents, posting it on your social media, so that they could spread the word? And you're an extension of what it is to be democratic? What it is to have others understand your level of knowledge? We're not all as wise as you are. You've been there for a reason. Now, give back that knowledge that you have, instead of sitting back and not caring. That's what people see out here. And perhaps you're doing your research on the computer, making sure that people get their answers responded, making sure you took the name of Mr. Greg Garcia and other people who have spoken here. Because if you know them by name, you no longer have a transaction with residency, with people that are here. Now, you have what is called familiarity, and these are your family members. You treat your family members how you want to be treated. You pay for the best. So, you educate them through workshops. So, again, these commercial and these industrial rates, why aren't they understood? I mean, council members sit here day and night, every time that they're supposed to be here. But is it the job of the resident to sit there and understand the wealth of knowledge that you have? I have heard on many occasions, and people coming up here and saying, "That is not my job." So, what is the job of a council member when it comes to letting the residents understand the industrial rates? What does it mean? How is it predefined? Did we go through the trouble of putting a table of contents and placing also perhaps the technical lingo that all of us use, and we fail to understand that not all of us have the same grade level or level of understanding? A judge may not understand the technicalities of what it is to build stucco or put stucco on a wall. This is the level of understanding that we need to bridge with our consumers, with our clients, with the people that we serve. It's a new type of leadership, and it's being demanded and asked for very politely, might I ask. All of these people have been polite. I think the most rudest person right now at this dais with raising her voice has been, perhaps been myself. All of them have been very respectful, honoring your authority almost as God-given rights. And these people elected us into office. These people elected you into office. The least we can do is pay attention, be that performer that at least acts like you're paying attention. Though single-family dwelling usage, it's predictable, I hear, while the commercial and the industrial fees are far less predictable. Why are multifamily dwellings lower than the single-family? These are three questions in one. Why does anybody take the time to write this, to spend their ink, to give it to someone in the office, and no council member has a copy or asks for a copy? Does that say something about us, about residents trying to want to be heard? We're going to be heard, and we are being heard, guaranteed, even though it seems like council don't hear. I bet you council has to hear. Election time pulls the ears of every single public officer. I've seen it time and time again. The increase for the first year is approximately 24% increasing to 53 by the year 2022. From 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, again, the same question of five years being asked. How can you get a 24% increase to become a 53% increase? A lot of people are seeing this as an increase that's going to affect not only their, probably their, if they have entertainment, but their gas, everything that's going up, it's going to affect, and they're getting a double, triple, quadruple whammy on this. These charges seem to be arbitrary. When you begin to understand the vocabulary usage that certain residents use, the word arbitrary means no care. We don't care. It's random. Is that how we work? Do we get paid the amount of money to be said that we're being arbitrary? I think that we should take offense to that. And we should say, you know what? That's not the case. Let's go ahead and sit with you. My hour for every Monday is available. As a council member who sits on that seat, I offer it. As an individual, I voice the same concern. That one hour is open to every single resident, whether they agree or disagree with me. You are welcome to sit down and understand why that 24 to 53% in five years seems so arbitrarily. Let's learn together. We don't know all, everything. We're not the water experts. We're not the sewer experts. We don't spend the day-to-day hours looking at water and looking at the increases. Some of us would like a little bit more of that technicality and have that and hear it a little bit more. Others just say, just give me the reason, and I'm happy with it. Can the city provide justification for these projected charges? Has the city contemplated a year-by-year increase to review? Mind you, these are very repetitive questions. They're asked in all levels of forms to see who will dare to say, please refer that to staff. We'll set up a meeting with you. Sometimes that's all it takes. With respect to this subject, it seems that infrastructure has not been applied. How can the city, in all truthfulness, project a five-year application toward the unknown? How much money did the city of Victorville give you to give a report? How much? One-time, 10-minute presentation. What did it cost our constituents that they still have no clue what this terminology means? The city of Victorville works for its residents. So, we need to speak the language of the residents. We need to be more inclusive, because when we start talking about the increases, and we start thinking as residents, it's going through administrative personnel costs, that's a dysfunction. That doesn't allow individuals to work together. It creates disruption. And we're not here to disrupt each other. We're here to say, these people merit their degree of level of professionalism and their money, not because you don't see what they're doing day in and day out. You think they're just sitting here, but they've worked hours upon hours beyond nine o'clock at night. But nobody in this chamber, except yourself and probably your colleague, may know it.
Excuse me. We've lost a quorum on the dais.
How can, how can with the city in a truthfulness project, a five-year application toward the unknown be? We have been paying the sewer rates for the past...
We have lost a quorum.
...16 years.
If you want to continue up here...
Have to wait.
Or wait till they come back.
I am an individual right now, and I'm not a council member. So, you do what you need to do. I'm finishing my questions. Thank you for interrupting me.
If you're indicating that you're not a councilperson, we have lost a quorum.
So, we have been paying the sewer rates for the past 16 years, reflecting the increases.
You want to take a recess?
Apply for...
Minute recess.
I'll come back. I'll come back. Thank you.
You need to. You're done.
No, just keep this orderly, please.
Yeah.
She has the floor now, I think.
Go ahead, Blanca. Citizen Blanca.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. So, in talking with our residents and being the same mind, it was suggested that with things like of this nature, your sewer and your solid waste, it would be simplified and very inspiring if staff and council would be able to post not a PowerPoint presentation, but a chart that specifically tells the residents visually first where the money is going and where it's coming from. When we have the coffers, and we have the pre-budget workshop, and I say, "Well, where's the information?" It's like, "Well, look in there. Where there." You got to have the coffers, and you have to have the pre-budget information in order for you, Blanca, to be able to ascertain what is being discussed. So, when we have to cherry pick all the information to get hopefully a picture of understanding, and go through the technicalities of understanding where the sewer rates and specifically this item, solid waste is coming, it would probably be a starting point to show something in a graph and explain the graph, not just assume the percentage says it all. And if the people are able to see something like that, and if they come back up here and say, "Well, you don't have this, or you don't have that," that would show that we need to tweak it a little bit more, or start implementing a couple of stuff, and back up again, right, and keep doing that. So, we have been paying the sewer rates for the last 16 years, reflecting the increases applied for VVWR, and an additional fee in 2008 for the sewer replacement. So, as you can see, we have constituents and residents putting two and two together. We have our own plant, and now we're basing it on infrastructure for the plant that we have, wastewater. And if it's cheaper, why are we still with VVWR? And these are, these are the connections that we either want to solidify with our residents, or we want to dispel to create what a transparency would be in that world's head for that particular resident. These changes are abrupt. So, if we have residents coming up here and saying, "You know what? You just threw it out us." You're like throwing something on the wall and seeing what sticks. I think we have to kind of step back as a city and look who we are providing services for and who we are really here for. These changes are abrupt, and the property owners should have been provided a precursor at the beginning of the fiscal year, stating that the intention was to raise rates. So, again, probably we've talked about this during our sessions when I'm, you know, with staff. We've talked about the beginning fiscal and the intended raises. And I try to understand, you know, when I, but when I go back and listen to the citizens' perspective, it's like, well, wait a minute. Why aren't they understanding if supposedly we have this understanding of our rate increase? It looks like it hasn't been in the best interest of the city to probably subsidize certain things. And I'm just saying, we're looking at our past, perhaps, and looking forward from the present. Perhaps we learn from the residents' questions, little bits and little theirs, because not all of us have the right response. We're here to serve others. One month is not adequate time. So, we talk about timing. We're here, if we spend here four hours on an item that has 15, and only 10% is spent on something that the residents believe in their lifetime is consequential to making or breaking their daily living, do you not think that perhaps is worthy to spend more than one-time 10% of two hours, rather than complaining and saying, "You don't understand," and you scapegoat that answer? To scapegoat something just shows the ignorance that we ourselves fall into when we don't adhere to what someone else's concern is. Communication is a two-way street, not unilateral. So, one month is not adequate? Perhaps we can start looking at a future. I don't know if we can start today. Looking at something that's more extensive and prolonging, if we know the end of the fiscal year is June 30th, and we start bringing the communication six months in advance as a precursor, telling the people, "We will be, we have an intent, if the council decides, to vote on this. Would you like to have a conversation? Because we've agendized this." Maybe you'll have five people spending 10 minutes, and the next month you'll have another 10 minutes. And by the time you come to a hearing, you don't spend the two hours. You've already piecemeal them in the six-month course, and now it doesn't sound like it's nagging to your ears, something that you don't want to hear. But I've always heard that the squeaky wheel gets the oil. Perhaps we need to keep coming here very periodic, when these rates have either been proposed or not proposed, and keep saying, "Hey, maybe it's not election year. Maybe it doesn't matter that it's election year. I just want to know that you're taking care of me, period." And I'm not going to say, "Well, you're out, and you're up for election." And when you feel threatened, you're not going to produce. You're not going to think rationally. So, if one month is not adequate, and you have Greg Garcia going out of his way to grab questions from his community members, when this is not his job, but he takes it, that means he has a passion to allow us to be heard.
Blanca, I'm sorry, but will you please stick to the item B3?
I am.
No, you're rambling on.
These are Greg Garcia's questions, and these questions on item B3, he picked up door-knocking from his neighbors.
Yes, but you're not staying with the...
And they are contextualized. They are contextualized, ma'am, with the increases that we speak of today. If you're asking me to communicate in your language, then we have failed, because the language that I use in my head through my experience in my years are to hopefully better give a narrative, so I can open up perhaps one or two council members' thoughts to vote one way or another. So, in the contextualization of item B3, if that's how you want me to express it, I will do that. One month is not enough. This is not just Greg Garcia's voice and Blanca Gomez's voice. It also incurs nameless neighbors that actually pay our taxes and continue to keep the survival of this bedroom community that we're trying so hard to bring in commercial and more industrial and a sustainability to the finances. But when the community feels that they're getting hit behind the back, do you think they want to continue to happily give of their monies? Let's think about that. Thank you.
I have one more card. Joseph Ho on item B3. And I'm sorry, we took an hour just to get to you.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Joseph Ho, and I'm going to try to make this very brief. We've heard some very passionate arguments, one way or the other, tonight, and I would like to propose a couple of things here. Regardless of whatever issues that we are facing us, well, first of all, tonight is the first time I attend the city of Victorville's council's meeting, and I have to say that it is very, very interesting and eye-opening. I propose that in the future, for some potentially contentious issues, like raised increases in fees or charges, that perhaps the city of, perhaps the city of Victorville's website should find more space and time in maybe defining some of these terms that we are arguing about tonight, or that we have been arguing about tonight. In my humble opinion, a efficient democracy is very expensive, and it also requires the cooperation of motivated citizenry to conduct it properly. And it seems to me that, you know, people come here, express their opinions, and they react mainly to the fact that, oh, there's going to be an increase. And part of the reason why we spent so much time tonight on this is that... is that, you know, we are the citizens, not perhaps given the opportunity to understand some of the things that is being proposed or has actually been passed already. My suggestion is, in the future, that we spend more time on our website. And I just happened to check the website just a few minutes ago to make sure that, you know, that definitions and terms that are explained and what the potential ramification is for people who are being affected by this. Now, for me, I can speak for the fact that as a personal, as a private homeowner, and I happen to be also in possession of some rental properties up here, I did receive, okay? I did receive all the notifications for the properties from the city. But I have to, so in other words, for people to say that, "Well, I didn't get it. I didn't receive it." There are a couple of explanations. Number one is the mailings were mailed to property owners. And the people who are affected by this fee raise are not necessarily the property owners, okay? They might be the tenants. So, for this reason, the property owners may not have passed on the mailings that you sent out to the landlords, okay? To the property owners. Because the tenants may not be made aware of it. But if we put these things on the website, okay? People who are motivated enough to check that will be able to understand what's going on. And the second thing is that, well, we heard that out of the 23,000 mailings that were sent out with considerable cost to the city, obviously, only 50-plus protests were received. That amounted to about 0.2%. And that is a very low outcome, okay? A very low response. The question is, well, why is this response so low? Well, I think part of the reason is people do have jobs, you know? They usually look at this and, okay, well, it doesn't really mean much and throw it away. And also, as I said before, all these were mailed to the landlords, not necessarily to the tenants. And I don't remember if I received anything related to the proposed fee increase in the monthly utility bill, okay? Because the people who are paying for this ultimately are the consumers. They may be just the tenants. And if the tenants who pay the bills are not made aware of it, so they may not have the appropriate motivation or the time to come and educate themselves and voice their protests. So, that's just my proposal is if we, in the future, are going to come up with this kind of contentious, this kind of passionate proposals that we ought to spend more time to educate the public by using modern technology. We spent a lot of time tonight on listening to lecturing. I would say maybe some grandstanding on some individuals. And I certainly hope that we could, in the future, move along more smoothly with less rank or among us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. Therefore, I close the public hearing. May we have our final count?
The final count is 57 protest votes.
Thank you. May we have a motion?
Just a comment, Madam Mayor. I don't question anybody's sincerity in their statements that they didn't know, didn't know, didn't know. We have been doing everything conceivably possible on our part, but I guess not mailing out a notice on the utility bill. That may be something in the future we'd think about. We've had it on the website. We've posted every single workshop, every single agenda item. We have done everything we could to get the public interested in this issue for the last six months. We have studied these costs. I have spent eight years on the Water District Board and then followed that with eight years on the council. And I have been the sewer guy on this council for the last eight years. I'm the representative to VVWRA. Sewer is absolutely critical. If we break a water line and a little water runs on the street, everybody's unhappy, but there's not much damage done. But when we put our sewer system at risk, the damage is almost beyond measure. The penalties we pay to La Hantin, the damage we do to our water systems, the damage we do to our flood controls, the damage we do when we put our sewer at risk is insane. And you don't want to pay an extra $6 a month to make sure that we can manage and protect this system. I'm sorry, that didn't cut much ice with me. I got to pay the same $6 you do. I wish you'd been here six months ago and you could have studied this with us because we've been through all the detail. We sent the first draft back and said, "It's too much. We're not going to ask people to pay that much." We scaled it significantly back to as thin as we could get it. This is what it's got to be. And I'm in favor of it, and I'll make the motion to adopt this resolution.
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
Is it an ordinance? And it be a motion to have a first reading?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
And wait further reading?
And wait further reading.
I believe there's also an environmental exemption. Is the environmental exemption included in your motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
For the benefit of the public, I'm going to entertain a substitute motion, which is like the first one, to postpone this another month to have individuals be able to voice their concerns.
Is there a second? There be no second, the motion dies. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye. For point of clarification, would the attorney or staff clarify what the majority vote was and what it means to the consumers from this day forth?
The majority vote was to introduce the ordinance and have a waiver of the reading of the entire ordinance. It'll come back for consideration again at the next meeting for second reading and adoption.
So, for clarification, at a second reading, second adoption, does that mean that the public has access to that secondary time to address any concerns or issues before it's in full-fledged?
It will be on the agenda as a second reading that they have public comment again, but it is not a public hearing.
I got it. Thank you.
Can I make a comment, Madam Mayor? Just for information only. We talk about having the public's input, and of course, we do with public hearings, a public input. But the notice that all property owners got, it's important that I read this. Any property owner of record, per Seminole County tax rolls, on a parcel identified as subject to a current proposed sewer rate increase, may submit a written protest against a proposed rate. And it gives every notice has that, every notice. So, we talk about the voters and all the public, but the people who protest are only property owners of record who have an APN number. That's the law. Anyway, call for the vote, Madam Mayor.
We've already voted.
Oh, okay.
And for clarification, June 19th will be the second reading?
I believe it'll be on the next meeting, yes.
Thank you.
The motion carries with Ms. Gomez voting no.
No other questions? No? Then we move on to item B4. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against the approval of a notice of exemption, appropriation of additional funding and award of contract for the inter-agency safe route to school project. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the notice of exemption, find that the good faith effort towards established disadvantaged business enterprises goal for this project was non-responsive for H&amp;H General Contractors and for All American Asphalt. Adopt Resolution Number 18-026 to amend the budget, including appropriating $3,592,000 in federal active transportation program grant funds, appropriate additional $331,000 from Fund 200, street lighting, and an additional $1,152,500 from Fund 250, Measure I, and award a contract to Sully Miller Contracting Company in the amount of $4,324,000 for the inter-agency safe route to school project.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions of staff?
Yes. To contextualize my question, on Memorial Day, I was with several residents out in Victorville over by Delray. The concerns were, we don't have any sidewalks where the children are walking from the Winko area to a field where there's homelessness to cross over to go to Delray or their Victorville Union High School, junior high school. So, for the benefit of the public, would staff please express the partnerships that we have with other school districts, with other cities, and how this project will potentially affect what areas and what boundaries when it comes to safe routes to school projects and what that term actually means?
Okay.
Well, to give a little bit of background on this project, there is a active transportation program that is a competitive grant program that has a cycle every year. And you, any agency, including cities, can't apply for grant funds out of this active transportation program. So, the city partnered with the Adelanto Elementary School District and also the Victor Elementary School District. And we had a safe route to school committee that identified various school sites that we thought would provide benefits to primarily school pedestrians. And from that, there were 10 school sites in the grant application, seven in the Victorville city limits, and three in the Adelanto city limits. We have an agreement with the City of Adelanto where they share an portion of the grant funding. The safe route to school concept is to provide a safe path for students, primarily students, or any people that will access the school on foot. And so, there are improvements to enhance the safety for those safe routes to school. We were successful in obtaining this grant, and now we're at the point where we're ready to award a construction contract to implement the grant. I don't know if that answered your question?
It did. Thank you. No further questions.
I'm just a little unclear on the fiscal impact. A couple of the budget items, the project costs in the budget is the same in the fund, so it's zero. And the third one is so close, might as well be zero. But two of them, the project cost is in excess of the project budget by a fair amount, about $1,500,000. And there's a note here about an additional appropriation from these two funds. Have we made those appropriations? Do we have the funds to make those?
The funds, the cash is available in the fund balance or in the cash balance. But to fund this project, we would have to appropriate these additional funds because the grant will not cover all the project costs.
And if we do that, where do we take it? What project do we take it away from?
It wouldn't take it away from any specific project because it would come basically out of a cash balance that is not designated to a project right now.
So, it's not all appropriated yet?
That's right.
Is this motion going to be to make those appropriations?
Yes, that's one of the recommendations in recommendation number three.
Okay. Thank you.
We have basically a shortfall. The grant won't cover all the costs.
I move to approve this item.
Second.
We have to open up the public hearing.
It says written communication. It doesn't say public hearing online.
This is under public hearing, I believe.
I realize public hearing was said somewhere, but my agenda item is written communication, not public hearing. Is this a public hearing item?
It needs to be a public hearing for the environmental approval.
It's on the agenda as public hearing.
All right. I'm just looking at the agenda. So, never mind. Go ahead.
So, Mayor, it would be appropriate to open the public hearing and take any comments or cards?
Okay. I will open the public hearing, and I do have one card. I don't know if you still hear Craig Garcia. I think he left. That was the only card that I have. Do I close the public hearing? And at this time, do we have a motion?
I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
Oh, wait a minute. You've already made the motion. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
The bell of motion?
Do we have a second on it?
Kennedy here.
So, I believe the motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Kennedy.
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B5. A public hearing to hear arguments for and against the approval of the award of a construction contract for the street plan for the Village Drive Street Improvement Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council appropriate additional funds in the following amounts by Fund 705,000 from Fund 221, the SB 1 Local Streets and Roads Fund, $562,000 from Fund 250, Measure I, $84,000 from Fund 425, sewer, and $506,000 from Fund 427, landfill mitigation. Reduce the budgeted amount from $900,000 to $100,000 for Fund 230, the Local Transportation Fund, and award a contract to Sully Miller Contracting Company in the amount of $5,154,490.90 for the base bid for the Village Drive Street Improvement Project.
Thank you. Are there any questions by councilmembers of staff?
Yes. So, I missed the bidding process meeting. So, would staff briefly describe the boundaries that this project will cover and how the city will be paying for the City-Village Drive Improvement Project? And it would be helpful from the future to have possibly a visual to be able to help to contextualize items of this nature.
So, briefly, the scope of this project is to reconstruct all the pavement on Village Drive, the whole length. It would go from Mojave Drive to Air Expressway. In addition to that, we are going to widen the road. There is a segment of the road that currently doesn't have a center-left turn lane, and that is north of Yanada, almost all the way to Air Expressway. So, we will be widening that segment of Village Drive to provide for that center-left turn lane. And then, in addition, we will also incorporate bike lanes into the project. There is some sidewalk proposed near Wested El Sol and also crossing the Wash north of Amargosa, between Amargosa and Yanada. That's basically the project. And we did have an exhibit that showed... And we did have an exhibit that showed the limits. It's not, it's not a very detailed exhibit, but it does show the, the project on a location map.
Thank you. No further questions.
One else? At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards, speaker cards, so I close the public hearing, and I need a motion.
I make a motion to move the item with recommendation from staff.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. City Attorney, it's 9:59, so I don't know if we will continue, or...
Yes, per the, per the policy manual, you have a provision in there that says you shouldn't be considering any new agendized items of business after 10:00 p.m., unless there's a majority vote of the council. And I think there are unfortunately a couple of items that staff really does need some input on, and you also have a number of people still in the public that I think want to make public comment. So, it's up to the council to continue this with a majority vote, to continue taking these items, or if you decide, you should still probably then just do the public comment and not do any of the new items.
I'll move to continue taking agenda items and public comment.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So, we move on to item B6, public hearing to hear arguments for and against a site plan with an environmental exemption to allow for the renovation and conversion of an existing motel into an affordable multifamily housing complex at 16959 Started Wheels Road. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council find the specific plan amendment and site plan exempt pursuant to Section 15061b3 of the California Environmental Quality Act, adopt Ordinance Number 2379, amending the Desert Gateway Specific Plan, and adopt Resolution Number 18-030, approving a site plan to allow for the multifamily housing project.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Councilmembers of staff?
Yes. So, for item B6, it's the hotel conversion into a multifamily complex. My question here is, how much control will the City of Victorville have in terms of the residents or non-residents that will be housed at the Desert Haven?
The proposal before you today is the land use entitlement. What is proposed is a permitted use for multifamily housing. We do have representatives from the Housing Authority here that will go over the programs that are offered to the residents. The, the city typically, from a land use perspective, does not get involved with the operations, the internal operations of a multifamily complex. But, again, the Housing Authorities here from the County of San Bernardino, they'll be able to answer questions regarding the, their internal operations of the facility.
I think she's, Maria's coming. So, I'll ask another question as well. Is this a similar project to the one in San Bernardino City? Is it going to be modeled after that one?
Yes, there is one other facility that they're currently in the process of, and I, I know that the applicant did submit a public comment card, so they do have a presentation for the commission at that time.
My next question is, how will these shake of hands with the county help reduce or aid in the homelessness that is faced in this city?
Again, the Housing Authority could probably elaborate further, but the county typically is it, is exempt from local authority, but as the Housing Authority, they're choosing to partner with the city to bring, bring forward this and partner with the city to alleviate some of the homelessness within Victorville.
So, you, you said that the county is exempt from local authority. Would you explain what you mean in those terms when you say they're exempt? However, you also said they're choosing to partner. What do you mean when you say partnering, and to what level? Provide an example, if you may.
Yeah, so recently, under the County of San Bernardino, there was a facility off of Sun Hill Drive. It was a crisis center that was recently built. The county opted not to go through local ordinances for that facility. But, in this case, since it is owned by the Housing Authority, the county's, has, does not have that capacity to preempt our authority. But, let's just say the city denied this application before you today. The, the county could essentially change this, you know, change ownership to put it under the true County of San Bernardino where they wouldn't have to be subject to this. The, the current property owner is the Housing Authority of, of San Bernardino, so it's not the proper San Bernardino County that's acting.
Okay, so, that last question, when you're talking about, I'm just curious, choosing locally one versus the other one not deciding to, is there like a fiscal impact to those types of decisions, or they're just, I'm not going to say maybe random, but there's a level of thought process where one would be decided to be controlled versus the other one, not necessarily, it's just a partnering? I'm just curious of how those decisions were made and why they're, how they could affect the city and the decisions that council could make ongoing, and I see you'll probably be addressing that.
Yeah. Councilmember Gomez, if we can, if, if it's okay with you, if we can have the representatives from the County Housing Authority come up and kind of talk about why they chose to partner with the city rather than preempt our land use process, they can answer some of those questions, as well as operational questions about the project, and then if you still have additional questions. I know the Director of Behavioral Health Services is here as well, as the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, and I think a lot of the questions might be answered.
Well, this last question that I have is city-related.
That's actually their choice to whether or not they preempt our process.
That one...
They, they made that decision.
On the city side, I want to know how much the city is actually contributing to them, and I don't know if they would have that answer, or as the recommendation, are we still deciding if we're going to import monies and staff, or is it not have, have those discussions take place?
So, two different kind of issues. One is whether or not they choose to go through the City of Victorville's land use entitlement process, which they did with our planning commission, but whether or not the city chooses to participate financially in this project is an issue that's actually not being currently discussed tonight because we're still in, in active negotiations.
Okay.
But, they can explain their decision to go through and partner with the city and, and elect to go through and work with planning staff and, and other staff through our land use process.
Okay, so...
If you'd like.
So, you're, you're saying that I kind of got a little bit ahead when we're talking about the negotiations?
Right, right. We're not dealing with that part of the project yet. It's specifically a land use decision right now, before the council tonight is approval of a site plan and a specific plan amendment for the project.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so at this time, I open the public hearing, and I do have two cards. Maria Raso is the first one, and then Dr. Alice Bellford, I think it is.
Significantly shorter than Scott. Good evening. Thank you very much for having us here this evening. I will try to keep my comments concise and my input. However, we are very passionate about this development, so I want to make sure that you have a full understanding of what our intentions are for this development. My name is Maria Raso. I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of the County of San Bernardino, I'm here to provide some background on Desert Haven, which is our proposed new affordable housing development here within the City of Victorville. So, I wanted to provide some brief background about our agency. We have been around for nearly 77 years and have a vast amount of experience in managing, owning, and building affordable housing. With a lack of housing that is affordable, not just within the City of Victorville, but within the county, this revitalization effort will create additional affordable units to help house those in need. The Housing Authority does have currently various affordable housing and market rate developments within the City of Victorville that we have operated and managed successfully for many years. We are primarily funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and we serve the entire county of San Bernardino with the exception of the City of Needles, which, believe it or not, has its own teeny-tiny housing authority. We do have experiences, I mentioned, in affordable and market rate housing. We are an extremely unique housing authority. There are over 3,200 housing authorities across the country, depending on various city and county jurisdictions, and our housing authority is one of only 1% of housing authorities across the country that have a special congressional designation that we received in 2008 called Moving to Work. We are unique in that way, and that our primary objective, unlike most traditional housing authorities, is not just to house families and provide affordable housing, but to assist our families to transition through our programs, and to assist them to move towards economic independence. And that is actually one of the statutory congressional objectives of the Moving to Work designation. So, there is a lot of research that comes into our work. We are proud to say that our research partner is the Melinda University Health Systems. Here's a quick snapshot. I won't go through this slide in detail, but just a quick snapshot of our agency. And so, our commitment to this redevelopment is to assist in the efforts to end chronic homelessness. Why did we select the City of Victorville to bring this affordable housing development for chronically homeless individuals? As the Housing Authority, our mission is to provide affordable housing within the entire county of San Bernardino. The last few homeless, actually, last several homeless point-in-time count data reports have shown that the City of Victorville has had the highest, for several years, number of homeless individuals, including chronically homeless individuals. In the 2018 report, the City of Victorville actually had the second-highest number of homeless individuals. So, as Ms. Smith mentioned, the Housing Authority has a choice in what cities we want to partner with, and because of the homeless point-in-time counts, we decided to partner with the City of San Bernardino, and will be building the first permanent supportive housing site for chronically homeless, which will open in the fall, and have also selected to partner with the City of Victorville as well in this endeavor. So, we aim to provide the opportunities and resources through this affordable housing site, again, as part of our mission to build communities and change lives. And the reason that this site was selected and working with the City of Victorville staff is because it has been, for several years, our understanding of blighted motel with numerous prior code enforcement violations. There is a list here of those. I'll go through each one in detail. Just kidding. And we propose to invest $1.5 million in renovations for this development. So, the Desert Haven Housing Development will convert an old and dilapidated Queens Motel to a multifamily affordable housing development. Post-conversion, these are some of the items that the property will include, and some additional items as an example. This is an affordable housing development. It's not a shelter or a transitional housing development. All residents will be required to sign a lease. The property will be gated and secure. It will be a private property owned by the Housing Authority. And so, here's a list of current partners. The Sheriff's Homeless Outreach Proactive Enforcement Team. So, the question was asked as to how we can ensure that residents of the City of Victorville will reside in this site. We have had a longstanding and active partnership with the Sheriff's Department, and will continue to partner with them to do street outreach and engage the currently homeless within the City of Victorville. There's a list of our other partners, including the Department of Behavioral Health. Dr. Alice Bellford is here to answer any questions that you may have in regards to the service component. Our workforce development providers include the County Department, Workforce Development Department, and also potentially Goodwill. So, some of the onsite services that will be included in partnership with the County's Department of Behavioral Health will include case management services, mental health services, behavioral health education and outreach, and substance abuse services. Our various other partners will also provide a slew of onsite services, to include but not limited to physical health services, employment services, as I mentioned, life skills, and linkage to legal services. Some of the onsite activities that will be provided are listed here, and I wanted to, this is very difficult to read, but I wanted to bring some examples of quotes from families that we have assisted and moved to market rate housing and homeownership throughout the years. And so, we see this is not just a home for these families that are in need and individuals, but also in providing hope to the residents of the City of Victorville that may need just that helping hand. So, in closing, our community and partners have all come together under this purpose to assist the City of Victorville, and together, we're working on helping persons in need to become stabilized and improve their lives, and the Housing Authority continues to be a committed partner in this endeavor. Thank you very much for your time.
Before you leave, would you be able to, the last slide was kind of quick, and I wanted to see what these onsite services were? No, you passed it. I think it was the picnic, something about picnics. Yeah.
Oh, yes. So, there will be an onsite resident manager, and so, this is just an example of onsite activities.
So, it would be more like what I see when I see an apartment?
Correct.
You won't be able to kind of tell, right? It's not going to be like obvious. We're not going to make...
Correct. It's, it's an affordable housing development.
And will it be, it won't be mixed use? It'll just be strictly for chronically homeless?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I close the public hearing at this time, and then we have a motion.
I move the item.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Garcia, just for the benefit of the council and for the audience, you've already made a motion to continue items. If you want to, I think there's only, per staff, about three or four items in the new business that are time-sensitive, so if you wanted to make a motion and just consider the time-sensitive items, it's up to you, but that would take a majority vote. It would be sort of an amendment to the prior motion to consider everything. Again, I, I believe the items that counts, that staff needs direction on are items D5, D7, and D8. So, if the motion is just to consider those items, then I would still recommend you have public comment based on the fact that people have been here for a while, the E items as well. And Keith, do you need any, any votes on the consent count of items at this point? Any of those time-sensitive?
Five and seven.
D5, D7, and D8.
D1 critical?
D1, critical? One is quick.
D1, it's non-controversial. I mean, it's not time-sensitive, that I'm aware of.
Keith, is there anything on the consent calendar that needs action tonight?
Pay the warrants, yeah.
So, I think maybe if the motion is to do the consent calendar, items D5, D7, and D8, if that's appropriate to the rest of the council, and then the E items.
Move them to the consent calendar.
No, I would just say handle those items, given the time, the ten o'clock time limitation.
Only those items.
Right.
Not the consent calendar?
No, I think the consent calendar is, include the warrants on the consent calendar, items D5, D7, and D8, and then the E items.
That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, so then we start with consent calendar?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I need clarification for what just took place. D5, seven, and eight, and all the consent calendar items will be heard tonight. And items D1 through D5 will be adjourned to June nineteenth meeting. And we will allow all items for the public to be able to give feedback. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. I think, based on the limitation in the council member policy, when new items should not come up after ten o'clock unless it's a majority vote. You had a majority vote. I understand this now, and you vote to limit the new items to only the consent calendar items, D5, D7, and D8. And then the rest of the items, E, will still be applicable, and as well as public comment.
I'm sorry. I need clarification. Are you saying all of the consent calendar or only paying the bills?
Keith, do you need just all the consent calendars or just the warrants?
Just the warrants are the important ones, payroll demand and commercial demand.
So, those are items C.
Why can't we just do consent calendar?
Do all the consent calendar.
Can I?
Yes.
Okay. Consent calendar, items C1 through C6 can be approved with one motion, unless there's an item that needs to be removed. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we will do item?
D5.
D5.
Move approval of that item, D5.
Is this Resolution Number eighteen dash zero four five?
Yes.
Yeah.
Second.
Did I read the recommendation?
I do not have any speaker cards. So, did we have a motion here?
There's a motion. Second, I'm waiting for comments from the council, or I guess someone is.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. Any further questions or comments?
Yes, for item D5, this is an annual report. And I was told that in 2015 was the last time that we saw this report. So, just briefly, if the audience could see what the annual report is about, that would be essential.
This is actually not an annual report. This is a proposal to extend a three-year agreement with the town of Apple Valley for the home consortium.
T5 is not an annual report. It's the item that you emailed several questions about. It's the home consortium renewal.
That's where we had, I asked questions about the membership.
Right, and how, what Apple Valley pays versus Victorville. Yes, that's, this is the item.
This is three-year contract, reviewed annually. So, maybe I just misspoke?
It's not reviewed annually. It's a three-year contract. Yes.
So, which one is the contract where we discussed? It was last in 2015. We didn't do it in 2016, and it's coming back. Because I, this was the first time in my term that I've seen this item. And it talks about membership.
Yeah, the last time it was approved was three years ago, so you would not have seen it.
Okay, so it is this item. Just, we're not communicating what I want to see. With this item, let me, let me start again. I just want to apprise the general public of what this, this report is. I just saw the terms "annual report," so I assume that it takes place annually.
Yeah, we do get annual funding from HUD through this program. But the, what's before you is, is a three-year term agreement with Apple Valley.
Councilmember Gomez, now I recall, the annual report that you mentioned that we skipped in 2016, that was on the consent calendar. That's the economic development and SCLA report.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Waiting for a motion?
Yes, please.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Ms. Gomez. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to item D7. Amendment to agreement with WSP USA in for the runway seventeen slash thirty-five rehabilitation project phases one A and one B. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the Board of Directors of the Southern California Logistics Airport approve Amendment Number One to the Consultant Professional Service Provides Agreement Between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and WSP USA Incorporated for Bidding Support: Construction Management and Inspection Services for One Way Seventeen Thirty-Five Rehabilitation Phases One A and One B, Project Number ESC Seventeen Dash One Zero Seven, Increasing the Contract Amount by Five Hundred Two Thousand Six Hundred Twenty-Two Dollars and Fifty-Four Cents for New Total Not to Exceed Amount of One Million Three Hundred Eighty-Two Thousand Nine Hundred Twenty-One Dollars and Fifty-One Cents.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Yeah, Eric, this is, this addition to the construction management contract was necessary because the scope of the project almost doubled.
That, that's exactly right. And it's all time.
Base one A and one B.
Right.
I do not have any speaker cards, so I don't know if a motion is in order now.
I'll move, with the amendment number one, does that agree?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Ms. Gomez. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D8, Amendment to County Fire Contract. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the proposed Amendment Number Four to the County Fire Contract for Continued Fire Protection Services Within City Limits with Such Nonsubstantial Changes as Approved by the City Manager and City Attorney.
Any questions by councilmembers of staff?
I have some comment, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
When this, when this discussion started, oh, almost two years, a year and a half ago, there were a lot of bumps in the road. There was a lot of discussions, a lot of emotions. We don't, we don't need to rehash what occurred with Measure K and a lot of things. But a lot of emotions on both sides, and it appeared that this was going to be contentious all the way. But our supervisor, Robert Livinggood, has been involved. We've made a lot of gains. I think we should recognize his hand in this and his helpfulness. And even though the city gave up several months at a cost that we really can't afford, I do appreciate his input. Hope the council will recognize that when this is all done and give him the credit that he deserves on this matter. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Move approval of Amendment Four to the council.
I'll second that.
Can I get another second?
He said second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, we go into public comments. And... How do I handle this? I have so many cards here, and I believe we did part of it already. Well, the spokesperson spoke.
When there's, when there are a number of cards on the same issue, you can request that a spokesperson speak on their behalf. But if they all want to speak, in the past, you've given them the opportunity to do that, but limited the discussion to two minutes a person.
Okay.
But out of a courtesy, you could request again if there's somebody that wants to speak on behalf, so that they don't just reiterate the same issues.
Since I do have quite a large stack of cards, do we have a representative that would like to speak on behalf of the rest of the citizens?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I do believe that I can speak for one set of our constituents, and I believe that there are a couple representatives from the state that would better reflect their specific needs, which are separate from ours. Good evening. My name is Ryan Heil, and I am one of the producers of the Chalice Festival, which is scheduled to take place July thirteenth through fifteenth at the San Bernardino County Fairgrounds. I was asked to join the Chalice team two years ago, as I produce large-scale special events around the world. Throughout my career, I have had to balance the cultural mores and value systems of many communities against the needs, content, and benefits of special events. I was skeptical at first of taking on a client in the cannabis business. But Chalice has proven at all times that via policies of demanding strict compliance from our exhibitors, being a proactive partner of the community in which we operate, and leading the industry from the front with integrity and safety as key values, that this event absolutely brings tremendous economic and cultural value to the host community. We have hosted Chalice twice, along with a third event, at the San Bernardino County Fairgrounds. As you will hear from a number of speakers, and as the historical record shows, we have gotten the formula right over the course of our events. We have delivered an impeccable track record of safety with zero incidents. And we have delivered an estimated $30 million of direct local economic benefit to this local community in Victorville. That benefit will only continue to grow if we are permitted to continue producing the exact same event this community has embraced and benefited from since our relocation to Victorville two years ago. Unfortunately, we have a problem. We were denied an agenda slot for tonight to request a vote on a variance that would grant us the requisite letter of approval that's required by the State Bureau of Cannabis Control to host our event at its full scale. This denial has already started to cause issues, with our event only six weeks away. Without the permit, we will have a severe downturn in exhibitors and consumer attendance who are anticipating the full legalization of retail sales and consumption at the event. And we've had to start planning for that contingency. We now face the reality of reducing our budget for vendor contracts, hotel contracts, and our estimated local workforce, all of which are supplied by local and regional vendors in the Victorville area. We have to redesign the event to be prepared for this dramatically smaller turnout. And these cuts and modifications could result in over seventy percent loss of that $30 million economic benefit in the next six weeks. That benefit, which has been counted on and relied on in budget planning for months by the local community. The repercussions of the reduction would be severe, and unfortunately, they could be felt very swiftly in this business community. The refusal to put us on the agenda this evening has left us and the community very little time to keep the benefits from our event in place.
I have thirty seconds?
I sincerely hope that the council will use its collective wisdom, hear the voices of the business community, and consider granting us an immediate and expedited path to approval for the event to proceed. If we are unable to ultimately secure this approval, it will likely force us to permanently relocate the event and all future benefits. I ask that the council members attempt to meet with the city attorneys, the fairgrounds attorneys, and the city manager's office, and find a way for us to keep the Chalice event here and thriving in Victorville. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I have a total of thirty-two cards, and I believe I did have... Stephen Clayton already speak, and then Brian spoke. I will limit it to two minutes? I will limit the time to two minutes? And those that have a spokesperson, actually, just let me know, and then I will just skip your card. April Pinkston?
Sorry, I've just been, as we've all been sitting here so long, I almost forgot what I wanted to say. I moved here ten years ago, and I came to the city of Victorville's city council meeting because I was concerned about the music ordinance and what was going on. And you all know that we all don't have the same taste in music. And sometimes, you know, our neighbors can play their music quite loud. Well, at the time, Angela Vias and Ryan McCackren were on, was mayor and city council, and they worked diligently to get the music ordinance changed. However, right now, it's not being enforced. And it's very, very frustrating when the neighbor, three blocks over and five houses down, is playing music so loud that I can hear it in my house. And then, when I go to try to talk to that neighbor about it, she's like, "Well, you know, whatever." And then, I talk to the neighbor that's directly behind me, when they want to have a loud party, and it's like, "Whatever." And I said, "Well, do, do you really want to start a civil war over this? Because you're in violation of the music ordinance." And they don't care. And then, by the time I can call the deputies and file a complaint, by the time they can get there, because there are higher priorities...
You have thirty seconds?
The music is shut down, and nothing is being done about it. And if you want to raise funds for Victorville, how about we start fining these people and sticking with the ordinance that says, "If you are a repeat offender, you can be fined civilly for it." And what about the fireworks that are going off? Nobody's enforcing that either, and that's very frustrating when I've got, you know, M-80s and stuff like that going off all night. And I'm not talking about July. And so, why isn't the city council, or why isn't the city ordinance being enforced?
Thank you. Joe Sucaro?
Joe Sucaro.
And then Jeff Hines after him. Joe, you're letting Jeff speak for you?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, members of our community, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jeff Hines. I'm the CEO of the San Bernardino County Fair here in Victorville. Abraham Lincoln stated, "Prohibition law strikes a blow at very principles upon which government was founded." It is interesting to me that today, that we are discussing an activity that was once legalized by the voters of the state of California and by the voters of the city of Victorville by more than fifty-six percent. Tonight, I want to briefly inform the council of the impact of its current prohibition against cannabis events. First, a bit of background. In 2016, the SBC Fair held its first cannabis-themed event. But prior to doing so, our Board of Directors worked diligently to create an important four-part test that we utilize to determine the hosting of any event. The criteria for the hosting of an event are: is the event legal? Is it safe? What is the financial viability? And what is the community impact? Cannabis events meet all of these criteria, and the benefits far outweigh any potential or perceived negative impact. The failure to allow Chalice, California, to occur is a significant economic impact to our entire community. The failure of this event to occur removes not new, but existing revenue from our local economy. Many of our hotels are already close to capacity, if not sold out. And it removes funds other companies have budgeted for after two years of seeing an impact an event the size and scope of this type can have on our community. It has been independently reported that the 2017 Chalice, California, event alone provided more than $30 million in economic impact in just one weekend. And the hosting of similar events over the past two years at the fairgrounds has provided well over $100 million in economic impact to this city and our region. This massive impact has all been created without a single issue, a single arrest, and no negative impacts in the community or around the community, at the event, before, during, or after. City staff has gone on record to indicate that our greatest concern is the safety of our citizens. We fully understand that. We understand that the city council may have concerns. But those who have taken the time to visit these events, those who have sat down to fully understand the events and the stringent guidelines under which they operate, have a very different perspective. At the most basic level, each of these events are required to have... At the most basic level, each of these events are required to have any and all permits required. Additionally, each event is required to hold third-party agreements with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Office at their sole expense. With over 40,000 attendees for Chalice over two years, and with over 25 deputies on-site each day, not having a single arrest at any Chalice or any other cannabis-type event is a great indicator of the safety of these types of events. The Victorville Police Department has publicly gone on record to state that Chalice and other events of its type are safe, stating, "Nothing of significance has occurred at any time." And to date, and quote, "To date, none of the festivals has resulted in increased crime in our area," end quote, according to San Bernardino County Sheriff's officials. It is also worth mentioning the safety of these events, events which are statistically safer than gatherings of NFL football fans. A public safety audit of the 2017 Emerald Cup in Santa Rosa, which drew more than 30,000 people, found that it resulted in zero arrests, zero hospitalizations, zero DUIs, zero incidents of violence, in stark contrast and in stark comparison to the six average arrests per NFL game. In addition to working with local public safety officials, San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, local and state fire officials, and other regulatory agencies, we at SBC Fair have also created a robust set of cannabis event guidelines and created.
Thirty seconds.
... documentation which outlines how each event will be held in compliance with all laws, rules, and guidelines. The simple and only reason provided to fair staff and leaders for not approving the hosting of this year's Chalice event has simply been provided that the City of Victorville passed a code. And as we have pointed out to city staff on multiple occasions, this code was discussed and ultimately passed prior to final rulemaking being completed in Sacramento and the process of stakeholder meetings that did not take into account the actual and full number of stakeholders.
Your time is up.
Who could and ultimately would be affected. At the time of adoption, this current, the council, the current code would have not taken into full account the impacts. At this time, I'd like to request that the council direct city staff to agendize this item for your June nineteenth meeting.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
So that we can provide a full concept of the full facts regarding this event, and the council can make a decision based on complete and accurate information. Thank you.
The next card that I have is Wesley Hintner, and after Wesley, Amy Stanton, and you have two minutes.
Thank you very much. To our mayor and esteemed council, I come to you this evening to say that not allowing events such as Chalice to operate in their full intended purpose and capacity would not only be erroneous, but detrimental to the local economy. The holiday in Victorville would feel a major impact by not having these types of events, and it would affect our labor force, budgeted revenues, and TOT revenues generated for the city. Not only is my organization affected, but so is our downtown area, including shopping, retail, service industries such as gas stations and auto repairs, and even the outlying cities of Apple Valley, Hispania and Barstow would be affected. I've partnered with Chalice for the past two years, going on three, in a professional stand, and have seen it grow into a tourism event similar to that of Coachella and Stage Coach, and it's more than just one day. Whether I am for or against the cannabis industry and related events matters not, as I recognize it is coming, and we are at the forefront of a shift that can shape growth in the downtown area through this emerging culture. I humbly ask that you consider allowing Chalice and any other events sponsored and sanctioned by the SBC Fairgrounds to be truly considered based on the impact our businesses feel and not by personal opinions or agendas. And if I could be so bold to state, the TOT rate for Victorville is only 7%, while Barstow's at 12%. I would personally love to see that rate increase to support tourism and quality events to draw more business to the high desert. Thank you.
Amy Stanton, and then after Amy, is she here? No? Okay. Brooke Rowwell. And after Brooke, John Kiroz.
About, I think it was maybe two council meetings, I came to the council meeting to complain about a cell phone tower that was next to a property that I own. The building department went out there, and code enforcement went out there, and all kinds of stuff happened, but somebody suggested maybe do a petition to see if they could do some beautification. So I have a petition for a street on Chula Vista. It's right on La Paz and Mojave, and there was, I have a petition, there was about, I don't know, forty signatures. It was just three streets, so I'd like to give that to the, to the city, and I'd like to see if our council members could do something. Look at the, the signatures, look at the, basically, two things I was trying to get past. One was a sidewalk that the water company owns. The water company, they did, did a lot of damage on the street. There were some repairs done, but they have a, they just replaced all the water pipes over there, so they flooded, I don't know how many, tens of thousands of gallons of water, but this street gets a lot of abuse from the cell phone tower company, from the water company. It's a nice, cute little street, and the two worst properties are making all the money. In my brochure, I have the cell phone tower on Chula Vista, and then, commercial properties actually have less satellite dishes than, than the satellite in a residential neighborhood. So it's a non-conforming property.
You have thirty seconds.
Okay. So yeah, if you could look through, the nicest picture of the cell phone towers is at the hospital. It's, it's a tree, and I think the date's about the same, but obviously, you know, they got a little bit more pushover there. So I'd like to, I guess I could submit it to a clerk, maybe?
Yes.
So you guys could review it?
Thank you.
Oh, and you guys should let them do their marijuana thing. It's, it's a moneymaker, you know.
You're John?
Yes.
Okay. And then after you will be Lisa Hoag.
All right. Hello, Mayor Garcia and council members and staff. My name is John Kiroz, and I'm the branch chief for the Fairs and Exhibitions Branch, which is part of the California Department of Food and Agriculture. Mission statement of our branch is to provide fiscal and policy oversight of the network of California fairs. Going back to 2010, the fair industry had their revenue cut 100%, and it was, it's an unfortunate event, but since then, we've encouraged fairgrounds to look for creative ways to generate revenue, and long behold, these cannabis events have popped up. And with the passage of SB 94 early this year, more fairgrounds are starting to have cannabis events, and we're seeing to be more common in the fair industry. We realize this, these events are new to the industry, they're new to you, but that's why there's a nine-member board on the San Bernardino County Fair Board to develop cannabis policy and work with the city and county to make sure these events are done correctly and they're safe. CDFA, the California Department of Food and Agriculture, has been working closely with the San Bernardino County Fair on the Chalice event, and the San Bernardino County Fair believes that this is going to be a successful event and that it's growing a lot of public interest. CDFA encourages the city council to place the Chalice event at the next board meeting on June 19th to create dialogue with the San Bernardino County Fair and the folks from the Chalice event, and here how the.
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. And here how the benefit will, or how the event will benefit the San Bernardino County Fair and the City of Victorville, and also, finally, to address any concerns the city may have with the event. Thank you.
After Lisa will be Angela Avery.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia and council. I would actually like to defer, I'm Lisa Hoag, the president of the San Bernardino County Fair Board, actually like to defer my time and just ask that we be on the June 19th agenda. Thank you.
Angela Avery, and then after her, Melody. Can I pronounce the last name? Is Angela here? Has she left? Melody. Jennifer Montier. I'm sorry, your name?
Jennifer Montier.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. Mayor and council members, I just want to let you guys know that I am full support of this, and everything that you said is accurate. As the event manager there, I work very closely with all of these events as well, and as a mother, I never feel unsafe in anything that we do at the fairgrounds, and I just wish that you would put your trust and faith in the San Bernardino Fairgrounds, which you call home technically on your medallion. Thank you.
Kami Champ, Kami Champlin, and after Kami, Katherine Chamberlain, I think it is.
Hi, I'm Kami Champlin. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for allowing us to speak tonight. I'm one of the board of directors and treasurer of the 28th District Agricultural Association. I'm also a mom, grandma, and I'm the executive director of the San Bernardino County 4-H Youth Management Board, where I work with youth on a daily basis. I would implore you to please consider putting the Chalice event on your agenda for June 19th. I have been there myself, and I think it's an event that has produced a tremendous economic impact for our hard-hit area, and I think it would be a great benefit to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. If you can refrain from clapping until we get to the end, it would speed it up a little bit for us, and we still have quite a few cards. Katherine Chamberlain, and then Destiny Wright. Was that Katherine that just spoke, or is that you over here?
I'm Destiny Wright. Katherine isn't here, and I'm a supporter of the SBC Fair and all the events they do here, so I just really ask if you would put the Chalice event on your calendar and give it a go. Thank you.
Larry Baxter and Chris Thompson will follow.
Hello, Mayor, Councilman. My name's Larry Baxter. I represent the American Legion. We recently entered into an agreement with the fairgrounds for concessionary functions. Basically, we sell the beer and the liquor. These events that are put on, and the funding that comes to us goes right back into the community, to the veterans' organizations, it goes back to the Barstow Veterans Home, and if we have any veterans that come to us needing a place to stay, or $100 worth of gas to get back where they're going, we provide it. These events provide us with the capability to help others. Thank you.
Chris Thompson, and then Bob Whaler. Chris is not here, I guess. It's either Whalen or, Bob Whalen or Whaler. You see here? Gilbert Vasquez.
How's it going, Mayor? Mayor, Council? My name is Gilbert Vasquez. I'm the owner of Firehawk Protection EMS. We're the local provider for the fairgrounds of Victorville, and I'd just like to say we support this event. It's been safe with also many other events we have there, and we'd just like to get on the June 19th calendar.
Lisa Smith. And after Lisa, Monica Davis.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lisa Smith, and I'm here on behalf of Firehawk also to show my support for Chalice. It's a great event, helps lots of people to get out there and do things in a safe environment. I was there last year, had no issues, and I'll be there again this year, hopefully. Thank you.
Monica Davis, and then Elaine Nelson.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia and council. My name is Elaine Nelson, and I'm a small business owner in the high desert, and I participated in Chalice for the past two years with no issues. Actually, it's been very successful. My business has made our budget this year based on revenue, anticipated revenue from Chalice. If Chalice is not able to occur, or if it's able to occur on a smaller event, that would definitely impact the revenue that our business would receive, which in turn would impact our plans of growth that we've had this year. In the past couple of years that we have had Chalice, and we've earned money from them, we have been able to expand our business, which in turn hires more folks in the, in the high desert, provides them with job opportunities. So it is definitely an asset to the economy, and we ask definitely that you do put us on the June 19th board meet, or the council meeting to discuss further. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Elaine Nelson, and then Devin Vincent.
Mayor, City Council, thank you. My name's Devin Vincent. I'm here on behalf of myself and also as the director of partnerships for the San Bernardino County Fair. I do a lot of business with a lot of different business leaders and owners, and all of which talk to me about the importance of having this event at the San Bernardino County Fairgrounds, and we just ask that you put us on the agenda and consider this event. Thank you.
Liz Sucaro, and then Art Rico.
I'm here tonight to show support for the San Bernardino County Fair for the Chalice event, and hoping that you put us on the agenda to consider this. I think it's a good event, it's a positive event, and we're just both here to show our support.
Thank you. Art Rico, and then after Art, David Placencia.
Good evening. I'm here to represent the local businesses in the high desert. We contracted, contracted with Chalice the first year. It went great for us. We budgeted for two years. We purchased equipment, we hired more people. Not having this event will have a tremendous impact, not only on myself, my family's budget, but also the 30-plus employees that we hire during this event. We also provide support with marketing and advertisement for, for the same event. So I would ask you to consider having this event and put it on your schedule. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for hearing us out. My name's David. Art's my partner. First, my hat's off to you guys. Never been to one of these events. Interesting, but it takes a special kind of person to deal with all the city stuff, so my hat's off to you guys. Second, I represent a small business. I believe in just working hard, doing what you gotta do, have discipline, stack, save your money and grow. Part of that is doing business, expanding to new things. The world changes all the time. We have to adapt, we have to grow our business. We try to do that. We ask you to be open-minded with that, to allow us to grow with the world, with the times, and just keep up to be able to help our employees continue to grow their family, their American dream, save their money, grow and everything. So just ask you to help us with this event, put us on the calendar, hear us out, keep in mind everything that's affected. Thank you.
Maggie Martin, and after Maggie, Xavier Ariza. Thank you. Xavier Ariza, and then after Xavier, Paul Linsley, I think it is.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Xavier Ariza. I'm here as a private citizen. I'm a small business owner in the city of Apple Valley. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Chalice Cup and related cannabis events at the San Bernardino County Fairgrounds. I would urge the town council to listen to the voters of the state of California and the voters of the City of Victorville. the voters of the city of Victorville. The Chalice event provides a safe opportunity for people to shop around, use, and even explore new things when it comes to cannabis. I understand cannabis is a new medication and a new way of life that we're all trying to get used to and learn more about, but it has been passed by the state voters, it has been passed by your local voters, and the cannabis Chalice event does allow safe access to cannabis in a safe, controlled environment. The $30 million economic output is a huge number, a staggering number, to be missing out on based on myths and lies about cannabis users and the effects of cannabis on people. Many people who are successful in life, who are small business owners, who are professionals, use cannabis on a daily basis, if not on a social basis. I would urge the Town Council to put this on their agenda for the June 19th event, and to allow the state laws to go ahead and go through with what's going on on state property at the county fairgrounds. Again, I would just ask for you to put this on your agenda for June 19th, and make sure that people can access cannabis in a safe, controlled environment that has provided zero incidents in its last two years, has an economic prosperity of over $30 million per event, and will only grow from there.
You have 30 seconds.
So I thank you for your time tonight, and I hope you guys put this on the agenda for June 19th.
Paul Linsley.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia, members of the council. I come here independent as a 12-year Victorville resident. I've owned a home in Victorville for the past two years. I'm very proud of living in this community. I'm very proud of what I invest in this community as a citizen. My wife works locally in High Desert, our three kids grow up in High Desert. If you look back there, you'll see my six-year-old son. That is the future of this High Desert, and one day he may be sitting in one of those seats. I commend you guys for what you do. However, I will say tonight, I had to take a six-year-old out of this room because I saw stuff that I would not want my child seeing. I'm a little disappointed in that. However, I understand this is a place for business. I do ask you guys to consider any source of revenue. Measure K has failed, that is unfortunate. As a Victorville homeowner, I voted for it. I want it to succeed because I want what's best for the city. At this point, we should look at all sources of revenue that are going to increase the potential hood for the city, increase the potential hood for employment, as well as all aspects for better living in the city of Victorville. Most of you, council members, have been on council for quite a while, and I commend you for that. And you guys have done an outstanding job with what you do and how you represent our city. All I ask is that you guys take this seriously and look at revenue, because with where we're going, how are we going to support ourselves as a city? Something to think about, where we want to be in the next couple of years. We have certain-
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. We have certain legal issues that we're now trying to get past. As a homeowner, I respect that, but we need to look forward into the future and realize what is the future of the city of Victorville for the homeowners, the residents, and more importantly, our youth, which is going to be the future. Thank you, Council.
Those were all the cards that I had.
If I might, Mayor Garcia, and if you'd indulge me, I did actually receive a card prior to the commencement of the meeting. They just asked that I provide some information. This is a proprietor of a KFC, and they provided pictures of damage to their KFC facilities that are occurring, and they wanted me to just go on the record on their behalf. And they have a card submitted. They just couldn't be here waiting this long for the meeting. So they have concerns with the homeless being, living, or living, spending nights at their facility and doing vandalism at their KFC facilities, and they just wanted that to go on the record.
Are you contextualizing this with the Chalice event?
No, this is just public comment.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Did you want me to read this, or just?
No, they just wanted to include it as part of the record. Again, the pictures show the problems they're having with the homeless doing damage to their facilities, and loitering, and sleeping overnight in their facilities. And their name is, I think I said it, McBriah.
Yeah, okay. Very.
They want to see if the city could do anything about it. I suspect staff might be able to get in contact with them.
Certainly. Okay, at this time, we will have our city managers report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Saturday, June 9th is Neighborhood Cleanup, Free Dump Day. I mentioned that earlier at Victor Valley High School, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Summer reading program 2018 starts on Saturday, June 9th, and runs through July 27th. That's at the city of Victorville Library, starting at 9:00 a.m., open to all ages. And then the American Red Cross Blood Drive is Tuesday, June 19th, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Victorville City Hall. And then finally, just from staff, if, I don't think there's a decision needed tonight, but maybe think about the July 3rd meeting and whether or not you believe it'll be necessary being so close to the holiday.
Now we have Item E3, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Items for the Upcoming City Council Agenda. I'll start over here with Mr. Negretti. Nothing? Mr. Kennedy? Bunker?
So in consideration of so much discussion for the Chalice program, I would like to be an advocate. You spend so much time here, and sometimes, like you say, you throw our hats off to us. I throw my hat off to you for being here. It's very difficult to stand through and watch some of these things, whether it's from the dais or from where you're at, so I commend you for being here and staying here as long as you have. I also have my nine-year-old here, whose future going to be sitting on this end as well. I've told her she has eight years for that commitment. I would like to agendize for the June 19th, or an immediate path and an expedited route to allow the Chalice group to continue with its plans as they have currently been requesting this evening. And for that decision to fall through, I would need a second.
There being no second, the motion dies.
I was prepared to second having a discussion, but I wasn't prepared to put it on the agenda for approval. I haven't seen any of the data. Do the motion. Let me explain. I keep hearing about there's no problems, but I keep hearing there are, and I keep hearing about $40 million worth of money in the community, but I can't. I've asked staff over and over to show me the data. Several members talked about all the hotels are full, I checked with the hotels, it's not true. I want to see the data. I want to see how important this is. And I have zero data in front of me. So if by putting it on the agenda so it can formally be discussed, somebody can submit that data. But I have to tell you that I have real conflicting information. If there in fact is, every hotel is full, and every restaurant is full, and there's $40 million, we ought to seriously consider that. But I hear that, but yet I see no proof, and the individuals I talked to say it isn't true, so I don't know what's true and what isn't. I don't want to just shut it out. For example, I checked this week, and said, no, you cannot, this was a state agency, you can't have cannabis and alcohol in the same event. But yet, they're going to, and they say it's okay. I need to find out. Can they, cannot? I don't know. This came from a state agency that you can't. So we need data. I think, I'd like to discuss it. It's up to the council, but if the motion is to agendize for discussion so that we can have this information submitted, I would second that motion. Agendize for approval, I haven't seen the data, I can't second that motion. So I hope you see the distinction.
So the motion is for discussion only?
Well, you can take a decision, but I don't want to presuppose what the decision is. It's to take the data for discussion, to determine action.
You know, this is, this is a whole economic development strategy that Atlanta has developed. They have a beautiful stadium, huge parking area. Certainly, they have an area that would easily match our fairgrounds, and they are receptive to this entire idea of economic growth. I don't know why they aren't pursuing it in Atlanta.
So then I'll amend my motion to say, discussion and possible action for the June 19th event regarding the Chalice discussion that we just had here.
Second, for the purpose of getting the information that's been alleged.
So the motion by Ms. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
The motion does not pass with Mayor Garcia, Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Negretti voting no. Any other items for the agenda?
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go ahead.
I would also like to agendize the use of electronic voting, an electronic voting system by the council. Agendize the use of electronic, of an electronic voting system.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies.
And the last thing is, I would like to agendize discussion and options of the Green Tree Golf Course and its budget.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies.
I'd request that we put the city adopted, newly adopted policy back on this agenda for discussion. Fortunate, but tonight proves we need more amendments to that.
Which newly adopted?
The one that we just adopted, the council policy.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anyone else have anything for the agenda? Now, reports from council members? I have none.
I have something brief. For clarification from staff, will Items D1 through 4 and Item D6 be agendized for the June 19th before we head out? Also, please provide me copies, hard copies, of all the information that the audience submits. I'd like to see that, please, in my inbox. And I'd also like to begin to see all the speaker cards copies also in my inbox from now on, so I can see who speaks and what the reasonings are. Thank you.
There being no other business for the council, this meeting is adjourned.
Always.